August 26th, Select Board Meeting to Order. It's being broadcast today, tonight on RCTV, as well as recorded on Zoom. And we will first start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, I'll briefly go over the agenda. 7:05, public comment for any items not included on the agenda. If you want to speak on any agenda topics, you can do so during the time in which they brought up. 7:15, Town Manager Report. 7:20, Community Spotlight. 7:25, Discuss and Vote on Overdose Awareness Proclamation. 7:35, Annual Update from the Reading ICE Authority. 8:20, Discuss Potential Override Budget Review with the Fire Department, Permanent and Ambulance Fees. 8:50, Update on Charter Review Committee and Discuss Public Hearing. 9:05, Select Board Liaison Reports. 9:15, Future Agendas. And 9:20, Discuss and Vote to Acprove Meeting Minutes from August 5th. And with that, I will start off with public comment.
Hi.
Yep, just name and address in two minutes. Thank you.
We kind of agree two minutes for the whole group or, well, I'll be quick.
Thank you.
I mean, hi, my name is Katie. Hi, how are you? I'm just going to pass those, that's what I'm just going to be.
Is the microphone green, by the way, out there? Just for people at home?
Um, can you hold this? No, there's no, oh, now it's green. Thank you.
Give them a moment.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Get right up to that microphone.
Right up to the microphone, okay.
So everyone can hear you.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Member of the Select Board, my name is Katie O'Meara. I reside with my house called Mike Wade at 17 Selfridge Road. We are here today regarding the plans for the parking lot at Austin Prep. Note, I have provided the plans and a little reference to the members. Specifically, the omission of any perimeter border for the protection of the residents of 17 and 11 Selfridge Road. We have serious concerns regarding the level of noise, car emissions, and car lights from the seven parking spaces which I've highlighted where there's no perimeter border. Quality of life, health, and safety will be affected. In addition, since the commencement of the parking lot construction, there has been at least four trees cut down, further reducing the visual boundary between the residents and the school. Note that I did reach out to Mr. Weber, the CFO at Austin Prep, he gave an email, and his response was, there is nothing that they can do at this time. We are requesting modification to the site plan at the location of the seven parking spaces which are about our property to include a perimeter border such as a solid fencing to mitigate the noise, lights, and emissions that will be byproducts of the parking. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Williams and I'm at 7 Selfridge Road. And my issue is very different from theirs because the parking lot doesn't quite align. It's all the dirt from the construction site. Has destroyed my deck, my pool, all my furniture, and the whole backside of my house. This is just, every day I have to go out there and clean the whole thing down. Like, sometimes you can actually see a wave of brown dirt just floating through your yard. So every day I have to go out there, and this, I have a little table by the pool. This is just one day's worth of dirt all over a 30-inch round patio table. It's all on the bottom of my pool, it's floating on the top of my pool, it's all over my screens, it's all over my deck. My handrails are all covered in dirt. So every day I'm out there trying to get rid of all of this so I can actually use my pool, which I have not really been able to use the whole month of August. So I've been backwashing my pool every other day. I usually do it about three times in the summer because my pool's usually really clean. With that, I've had to keep adding water to replace the water that's brown and black coming out of the backwash tube. And all the water that I've used to hose down everything all day long. And I just don't think it's acceptable that my backyard should look like this because they're putting in a parking lot. And I'm not sure, I've called the town of Reading, they did not get back to me. I called Core Construction, who owns the company that's doing the construction work. They never got back to me. I've called Austin twice, and they called me back once because what I asked for was if they could have a water truck and maybe just hose down a little bit of the dirt pile so it's not all blowing around. And he said that they can't because it would just make a big mud puddle out there. And that they do have hoses, that they do hose down. But I actually went over and talked to one of the construction workers, and they have no hoses out there and they're not doing any of that. And I actually called the Reading Police to see if they could help me with that all. But it's just a little unsettling that this is what my backyard looks like. And I don't even know what's in this dirt. Like, I don't even know if it's safe to go in my pool. I put moshalls. It's swimming in pure chlorine now, so I don't know what can be done, but, you know, because they said the project's only going to launch in November, but thank God my pool won't be open that long. But, you know, it's ruined the whole month of August for me and my family, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I concur as a meeting member.
Hi, I'm Peter Nestor. I live at 11 Selfridge Road. So Austin Prep is directly behind my house, okay? We're about to land. I think I'm getting the worst of it between the dirt and the grit on my porch. You can just throw your hand out every morning and just, it's all covered. My pools are worse. It's been over 40 years. I have a little pool, in-ground pool, the dirt, my automatic vacuum every day, and my kids clean it at least twice a week. And skim it, of course, every day. It's a rotten shame that something shouldn't have been done for more protection. I am a disabled vet. I just went upstairs, I got my 100%, I showed them. I have asthma, so I don't think we're being treated very fairly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Michael O'Meara, Katie's husband. Just wanted to also add, what she had is a property similar to what Nate said. We can see all the dirt and everything on our back shed and so forth, they didn't want to get into that. But I'm also concerned about the visual because there's a lot of trees and shrubs that have been removed. Look out my backyard now, I see the parking lot. It used to be all trees and shrubs. One of the reasons we bought the property was we have the Austin Prep land, and now it's going to be a parking lot. So I'm concerned about what it even does to our resale value. We'd at least like to have the trees and shrubs replaced, put back in there so we don't have to look at that parking lot and the cars and everything every day that we have, the natural woods that we were looking at when we first bought the house. I think that at least should get replaced back to where it originally was. Because now it's like wide open, there's been so much removed, and that's concerning as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one addendum, in terms of the lights and the noise and all that, we have experienced that. We've been there 30 years, Barbara, how many years? 34, Pete's like 50 years. But so they, several times during the year, Austin Prep, prior to this parking lot situation, they have functions where they use that backfield. So we have experienced the lights, the noise, all of that, you know, for graduation, for prom, for senior this. You know, there's several, several things. So that's why we have experienced it, so we just don't want to do something about it, so thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Typically, we don't respond to public comment, but I know Matt has a meeting set up with Dr. Hickey, right, already? So no promises. I will broach the subject and, you know, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you, thanks. When is the meeting? Just I'm curious.
I believe we're setting that up currently, so he's just back from vacation, so.
Okay, is it okay, right? Email you and just?
Yeah, email me and I'll discuss it with him personally, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nancy?
Nancy, Dr. Pearl Street, Precinct One Meeting Member. And I guess I'll be coming to all public comments for a while until there's some type of plan to address transparency. The school department revealed this past month that the project for the silt house came in under budget, and that money was then spent on their wish list, which I wish they did not do because their wish list was not anything that was in the warrant the town meeting approved. This isn't the first time the town meeting funds have not been used as they were voted on a few years ago. The police department asked for renovations, part of the renovations were to move the health department into that building, citing the need for more space, particularly for the public health nurses for confidentiality. The health department never moved to the police department. I believe that was $200,000. That's never been addressed. Come to find out, town meeting also approved for the tennis courts to be repaved at some point. That money was never used to repave the tennis courts. Now, there may be reasons why things were done differently, but they've never been discussed. They've never been explained to town meeting or to the taxpayers. And transparency is required for trust. I don't know how I am going to, as a town meeting member, address the budget next cycle when I'm not quite sure what people are really doing with taxpayer money. So I would like to know at some point between the town, the schools, the incom, and the select board, what's the resolution? This is very concerning. We have two very large projects. We have recalc and we have to kill them. That's taxpayer money. I'd like to have some transparency for what is going on with taxpayer money. Because when town meeting approves money, it should be used for what town meeting has approved it for. If you would like to have a different form of government, then you should petition that and send it to the voters.
Thank you. Linda?
Thank you very much. I had a couple of things. One is just a huge thank you to the Select Board and the town for the Green Community status. That took a lot of work, and that's made a lot of progress, and I just wanted to thank you for that. I also wanted to say thank you to the Coalition for Prevention and Support. I've been on that board. I know it's on the agenda, but I'm just saying a huge thank you. I've been on that board for over a decade and have seen all the work that they've done. My kids have been ambassadors for them, and it's impacted them and their friends' lives. I've taken their trainings. I have been so impressed by the crisis intervention team and how that works. I recommend people learn about all that's happening. You can reach out, you can get the notes from our weekly, our monthly meetings. It's just been so amazingly impressive and helpful to our community. As the liaison from the school committee I got, I just was thrilled. And I saw the relationship between that organization within our town and the schools. So thank you to Erica Marlette and her team, and the police department for collaborating on that. The third thing I wanted to say was just to ask for an update on the RCTV status of the contract. I hope that the Select Board will be listening to so many of the residents and to the school committee about the value of RCTV and all they've done. I know as a town organizer, they have always been there for me. I don't need to repeat what I've said before. But RCTV has really been there to try to get the good work of our volunteers, our town, our students, to support the good work and to get the word out to our town. So thank you. I know your job is very taxing, and I appreciate every minute you spend on it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Oh, Fever Road, sorry, Linda, no dots.
We will update that.
No better.
Anybody else in the room? Anyone online? Is it Maddie tonight?
Maddie, yes.
Not seeing any hands on Zoom.
Perfect. Well, I don't have to use the fancy music anymore.
It's the Oscar music.
Yes. Alright, so we will now move on to the Town Manager Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as was just mentioned, and a lot of people know by now, we are a Green Community, so I wanted to thank everybody that attended our event that we held on August 21st on the Town Common, and thank everybody involved for making that happen. We got a nice certificate from, signed by the governor and other state officials as we reached this major milestone for our community. I brought it with me tonight. It's on display up front if anybody didn't get to see it last week. And we will hang it proudly in Town Hall. Reminder that the Fall Streets Fair, I can't believe it, but it's just a few weeks away. Sunday, September 7th. I understand this is the 17th Annual Fall Streets Fair, so it's been a long time going. And I wanted to thank the Reading Rotary Club for sponsoring again this year. This sighting, we put them right to work because we have a lot of issues going on. And he joins us with a lot of experience from another town. As does, next week, our new collector, Richard Aria, will start on September 2nd. He joins us with 16 years' experience from another town. So again, two highly trained professionals joining our team here in Reading. One sort of semi-employee update is that our canine dog Tango turned four today. The chief reminded me, so happy birthday to Tango. He's done great service for Reading over the years. I wanted to move on to an MBTA Turn Back Track Brief Update. So we had a meeting yesterday, Jane and I, with MBTA officials. And both our fire and police chief, our fire chief is here tonight. The meeting was mostly focused on gate closings and times. And they reviewed all the questions that the chiefs had. The MBT had data that we reviewed, we had questions for them. So I think it was a productive meeting. They are planning some sort of public forum in mid-September. It was supposed to be a little earlier in September, but they're going to move that to a date in mid-September. We're working on either the library or the Pleasant Street Center to have that meeting. We'll finalize the date and get it out there as soon as possible. We've also asked again, as we've been asking all along, for the MBTA to meet the smaller group of residents in abutters that Jane and I and many of us have met with and address their concerns head-on. And they're strongly considering doing that. They didn't have a committed date on that yet, but we continue to urge that to happen. I know that it was brought up at public participation about RCTV, and I have planned a just a brief update tonight. Melissa Murphy couldn't join us tonight, and so she asked me to give a little update on the negotiations. She's part of our team, as is Jane. We've had a total of six negotiation meetings so far with RCTV. And there's another one planned next week, so that'll be seven. I can report that we are making progress. RCTV has taken the concerns of the Select Board very seriously, and we're incorporating that feedback into the agreement that we're working on. So we'll have more later. I know people want specifics, but the negotiation team on both sides, RCTV and the town, agreed that, you know, we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves. Things still have to be reviewed by legal and whatnot. But, you know, we will have a draft in September. And I wanted to emphasize, because I've done a lot of emails too, that, you know, and the emails are saying that we might possibly lose our peg channels and lose our coverage. And I could say that even if we were not able to come to terms with RCTV, we would not let that happen. We would not let gaps in coverage like that happen. There are other things we can do. And I'm hoping it doesn't go that route, but I just want to let people know it's not going to be we-go-dark at the end of the month or at the end of the summer. And that is my update, and I think Jane might have one update as well.
Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So briefly, we're continuing to work on the rubbish and recycling contract. That will be up in July 1st, 2026. We've met with several of the vendors that sent in proposals. Again, we had five proposals that we received. We've been battling with staff and vendor vacations as we ask them to sharpen their pencils and get back to us. A particular piece that we're really asking vendors to sharpen their pencil on is blended value. Blended value is our recycling mix, okay? So under our JRM legacy contract, we do not pay for recycling. And as we all know, those days are over. So we did an audit in the spring to assess what our mix of recyclables are in Reading. Results of that blended value are in the RFP that we put out. And Reading, you may be interested to know, recycles very well. We do a good job as a town, and we have a valuable mix. What's valuable is cardboard, paper. What's not valuable is glass. We have a high volume of cardboard and paper that we recycle in town. So that's advantageous to the town. That blended value is what helps us reduce our costs for recycling because the value of what we're recycling is higher, and so it has a market. We track what recycling value is on the market. So this is a whole new world from the way the old JRM contract was done. So that is what we're working on. We're very encouraged. And our goal is to bring back a recommendation to the board. We'll have a detailed memo and lots of information for the board in September so that we can have that decision made. And then it'll be ready for the Finance Committee and for, oh my gosh, a combinator cost portion of the budget as we go forward. So that's that first piece that we're going to be looking at. And so we really want to nail this down early in the fall. And additionally, if a vendor needs to procure automated trucks to fulfill the agreement, that's the requirement in this new agreement, they'll have time for the supply chain to be able to do that. So that's our process. That's a little bit more detail maybe than you wanted, but the blended value is very important as we go forward to put us in the most advantageous position, and we feel that we are getting traction there.
Have you opened the pricing already?
Yes. We read all of the proposals, and we've opened the pricing. And now we're in negotiation.
Good position or a not-so?
It will be more expensive than, it will be more expensive than it was, which we all knew it would be. But I'm very encouraged that we're not going to blow the budget.
Okay, seems like you have it handled.
Thank you.
Yep, so we will now move on to 7:20 Community Spotlight.
Okay, thank you. Back to me. Tonight, I'd like to spotlight two dedicated Reading police officers with work anniversaries. So Lieutenant Detective Rich Abadi and Sergeant Ian Nelson both hit their 20-year mark at the department just last month. If you know Lieutenant Detective Abadi, he was our first school resources officer way back when, and he's been leading our detectives for several years. Also, many of you might know Sergeant Nelson from his work with the Eagle Scouts, and he comes before this board from time to time with scouts to talk about all the good work they do. He's also the brother of our fire chief, Rick Nelson, who's here tonight. So I want to congratulate both of those two dedicated employees for 20 years of service to the department and wish them well in the spotlight. And then just a follow-up on a spotlight to do this, and I spoke about Marathon Sports as a business highlight and the good work they do, and they've been here for one year, and I said that they were planning something. I've since been informed, the one-year event will take place actually this Saturday, August 30th at 6:00 p.m. And they're going to begin with a group run, and then a party at the store afterward. And everybody is welcome to that. So if you're up to the group run, join the group run.
How about the group walk?
Maybe a crawl, I guess. So, and that concludes the spotlight.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Alright, so we'll move on. 7:25, Discuss and Vote on Overdose Awareness Proclamation. Erica?
Good evening, everyone. I am Erica Maye, the Director of the Reading Coalition for Prevention and Support at the Reading Police Department. I've been here for 17 years, and I came here a year after the Coalition was founded in response to local losses from opioids. And the work that we do with the Coalition is to try to prevent, intervene, and address issues related to substance misuse and mental health. So tonight, before you, you have the International Overdose Awareness Resolution or Proclamation, which is a way to acknowledge the work that we still have going on in the community to address these issues. And it's also an opportunity for us to let you and the community know that this is the kickoff to our event in September. We are hosting a time-to-gather here at Town Hall on the lawn right outside here, where we will have our community exhibit, which gives people an opportunity to look at some of the stories of people we've lost in Reading, whether it's to substance misuse or mental health. There's also an opportunity to celebrate recovery for those who are thriving in recovery, as well as to support the families that are dealing with challenging issues. One of the things that is a difficult task that we have every year is reviewing the death certificates of our residents that we've lost. And Laura is very helpful in letting us have access to those. And in the last 15 years, we've lost 105 Reading residents, 24 to suicide and the remainder to substance misuse. So when we come before you and talk about statistics for those of us that have known those folks, for the families that continue to grieve for them, this is real. And we hope that the community will come out for a time-to-gather. And we also invite everyone to check out our information on social media to get involved in our Reading Poetry Prize Contest, which is part of the event, for young people to share how they feel about creativity and mental health. And with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
Thanks, Erica. Board members, any questions, comments? Nobody? I guess, for me, Erica, I've been going this since, you know, I got in the Select Board. It's always a good event that you and the Coalition and everyone else has put on. One of the first emails that I got, or messages, I forget, either way, was from a resident, Connie Postorino, who had a unfortunate loss regarding the situation. And, you know, her and I have chatted here and there over the years, and she always wanted to see about, like, having an International Overdose Awareness Day. And then she mentioned it, I think, a month or two ago, somewhere on Facebook. I randomly saw it, just like everything else, unfortunately. And, you know, I said, I'm the chair, I don't care, either scenario. And I said, you know, I think that, you know, it's finally time to get a proclamation on the books here in Reading. Because for something like this, it doesn't pick political sides or whatever. It, you know, it chooses everyone equally, unfortunately. In my own family, I've had family members, unfortunately, you know, just like everybody else, and brought back from the dead, I think, two or three times, which is crazy to think that those kind of things can happen. But, you know, it's obviously a learning experience. He's doing a lot better now, so that's good. But not everyone is that fortunate. So I'm just really happy to be able to propose this. And then Connie could have made it tonight, so she just prepared something for me to read instead. So she said, "On this International Overdose Awareness Day, we remember the lives lost and families impacted at the hands of drug poisoning or overdose death. Two on 886 a day die from overdose. August 31st is recognized as International Overdose Awareness Day, the world's largest annual campaign to end overdose. Remember those who we have lost in an overdose. Acknowledge the grief of the family and friends left behind and renew our commitment to end overdose and related harms." So thank you, Connie, for that, and thank you for, you know, inspiring not just me, but, you know, everybody else in town to just come together for the event in September. Is that on here, what you just gave us?
Yeah, so September 17th, you should all have gotten invitations, purple envelopes, hopefully you saw them.
Yes.
And the information's also on our social media and website. And I do want to also mention, the week leading up to the 17th, the exhibit will be up for the community and for our families that have lost loved ones. Sometimes they prefer to go on their own and walk through the exhibit, experience it for themselves rather than come to the event. We want to let folks know and families know that that's an option for them. For those that would like to come to the event, it starts at 5:30 on the 17th, and we will be ending the event with a candlelight vigil, which a lot of folks do like to come and honor someone that they've loved, so.
Thank you. Anyone from the public?
Where is it located?
Right here, right outside Town Hall. Yep, it'll be out on the lawn, yep.
Anyone online, Maddie?
No one online.
Alrighty. Karen, do you have a motion? I mean?
I'm going to read it first.
Yes.
"August 2025, Overdose Awareness Day in Reading. Whereas the Select Board determined that substance use disorders were profoundly impacting the town and our residents, such that they helped establish the Reading Coalition for Prevention and Support in 2006 to improve community collaboration, reduce substance misuse, and promote mental health. Whereas, we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. Whereas, the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day on" Whereas, the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day on August 31st is for remembering loved ones lost to overdose and those working with the community to reduce the risk of drug-related deaths. Whereas, the town acknowledges that the people affected by overdose are deserving of our compassion and support. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Reading, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws of Reading, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2025, as overdose awareness day. In witness whereof, we have hair unto set our hand this 26th day of August in the year 2025, the Select Board of Reading."
Thanks, Karen.
"Move that August 31st, 2025, be recognized as overdose awareness day in the Town of Reading."
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? For zero. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it, the time.
Thanks.
Yep. Hope to see everyone on the 17th.
I will be there. It's a prime moment.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Erica. This is September 17th.
All right, right on time. Seven thirty-five, annual update from the Reading Ice Arena Authority. And Carl is here. Anybody else, Carl? Nope. Just you then.
Is that okay?
Of course.
Can we ask, can we ask who was invited? Matt, did you invite the tire board?
At the, at the event last week when we had the tour, I invited, obviously, Carl. And I forget the man's name, but the chairman, the board, it was with him. I said to board members, what was his name again?
Dennis Hughes.
Dennis Hughes, I'm sorry, yeah, Dennis Hughes. Thank you.
All right, Carl.
Good? Yes, thank you. Carl, with that, Dr. Lakefield Street, your representative on the Burbank Ice Arena. Board, as Matt just stated, was last Tuesday, I believe, Tuesday, Wednesday. The board was able to come to the rink, do a tour of the rink, asked Jim Brown, who's been working 25-plus years at the board, to go over all the different aspects of the rink. And hopefully answer most of your questions. I'm here to answer anything or at least get information to you of any questions that I can't answer tonight. Just a quick background, Nelson Burbank donated the rink in the financials court 30-plus years ago. Presently, the rink is given almost $3 million in direct, indirect revenue back to the town, as well as we have no debt on the rink. A replacement rink. I know Belmont's building something similar for roughly $40 million. I don't know if the rink's worth $40 million, but to put up, if anyone put up a rink now, pretty big, pretty big deal, shall we say there. From the financial aspect of it, I know you guys are going to be building pickleball courts down on Simon's Way next to the Range Road. And I know from the profits that the towns, the rinks donated back to the town. I believe it's $150,000-ish. It's been appropriated from the funds from the rink to that project, which is, you know, it's great that, that's something that obviously Nelson's wishes, you know, for recreational type of activities. I'm sure he's looking down and is very happy with that. Presently, from the financials, we have between the two banks, $270,000 in our checking and savings account, shall we say. Next year, we're anticipating, because we had to replace the roof, as you know, last year, which cost $285,000. And we had to pull down off the reserve account. And typically, we're looking to turn back the town $85,000 to $100,000 a year ballpark. It would take three years to replenish the funds that we used for the, for the roof. Looks like we're in the, we'll actually do it in two years. So 50% faster than we anticipated. This year, we actually had record revenue. We did over a million dollars in revenue, which, you know, area towns are like friends in stone, and goes about $600,000. We're doing a million and 40, I believe. One of our big expenses that's come up, unfortunately, is our MLD's increase, about a 20% increase to our electricity bill. So that's a big nut for us coming up there. The positive on the operations, the rink is fully booked. Reading youth hockey is exploding, which is exciting. And they're there seven days a week. But unfortunately, they have so many kids that are participating that they're actually going to have to go out of town because we just don't have enough time available to them. The North Shore Skating Club, one of our other big tenants, we're actually in the process of signing a long-term lease with them because they're trying to get away from hockey town. And so it's on Route 1 to come towards us. So they're obviously very happy with what we have provided them over the many, many years. And hopefully we'll be signing a long-term lease with them. Some of the things that I know you guys are aware, last year, unfortunately, there's actually a board member, Jim List, that had heart attack on the ice. And we're very fortunate that Ed and his staff were trained and actually the equipment was up, up to speed. And Jim Brown, we actually dragged him off the ice, put him down there at the defibrillator, brought him back to life. The fire department came down and, you know, were able to save him there. What's amazing is every two years they do the training. But in another town, similar type of situation took place. The defibrillator did not have, its battery was not charged up. So it didn't work and the person ended up passing away. So fortunately, Ed and the staff are always constantly monitoring everything, making sure, God forbid anything ever happens, you know, they're ready to go off of that. You know, from that, they've received numerous awards from the CPR to the Boston Bruins. Ed received the North Shore Skating Club's President's Award in 2022, excuse me, the ice rinking industry bent into Wilcox Award for executive management, was, Ed won that award, which is the most prestigious award that you can receive in the hockey, ice management world, shall we say. With that, I open it up to any questions you may have. I know a lot of these questions are already answered last week, hopefully, so.
Okay, okay. Board members, any questions? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So he was not able to answer this question for me when he gave us the tour of the ice-making machine, which I found fascinating and it sounds like from the dinosaur time. And I wanted to ask him, but it sounded noisy. What are you going to do if it breaks? And he says that you've been not band-aiding it over the years, but at some point, what's your plan B?
Typically, in general, the Zamboni, the compressors. The compressors. With everything, you know, we have backup parts that are there. Ed works, you know, we're fortunate that we're able to, yeah, he's always checking it. He works essentially seven days a week off of that. That is, you know, a disaster that could end up happening.
I don't want to say anticipating the disaster, but you have something lined up that if it does fail and you've got the funds set aside in order to fix it or replace it, you know?
Right, well, that would be out of the reserve account, which we're anticipating June of '26, whatever, nine months from now, 10 months from now, we'd have over $300,000 in that account to be able to allow something like that.
How much would that cost to replace?
Depends on what breaks. You know, it's kind of like your car, you know, if transmission goes and break out, you know, you just...
But you don't have, it looks pretty antique-ish.
The rink's 30-plus years, all that, I mean, it's there. But staff, the biggest thing is that we're very proactive. So something that down the line may be a major thing before you can, you know, nip it in the bud early and then the cost won't be as much.
Can I ask another question?
Of course.
Solar, you have the new roof.
Yep.
And it may have been discussed in chat.
Sure.
So has that been discussed?
Yep, years ago, we met with our MLD and did the same, you know, did an analysis to see what could work, whole nine yards. And it wasn't economically valuable. I believe two, three years ago, this board asked us to take another look at it. And I don't believe he's the general manager anymore. Stated that, you know, this is new RMLD, so he was very optimistic that we could. And it ended up coming back, that it did not make financial sense to pay back something like 20-plus years off of that, so.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah, yeah, it is. As well as, if we put solar panels on top of the roof, that was going to, that would nullify the warranty on the roof. And I know the previous fire chief had concerns, but just to be aware that it would require, like, we have to build almost like a shed type thing where the batteries from there and others, some fire codes or something like that. If you were, you know, not against it, just please be aware that that's a major cost that you would have.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Karen?
I have a lot because I appreciate the tour you guys gave us last week. And, and I didn't get a lot of answers to the questions I was asking, but Jim was doing a lot of the tour and, and Ed was unable to be there, the general manager. So, so, so tonight's update is great and I appreciate you coming to talk to us. But I would really like us to have the operational, annual operational meeting that we call for in the lease, which is like a room when we see board members coming, not just our, our hard-working designee to come and talk to us. Because as you made comments earlier, it is a third-year-old building and I'm sure you have concerns about which pieces are end-of-life and what they're going to cost to replace. Who's going to pay for that? How are you going to pay for that? So I'd like to, we can't really have an operational meeting in a 25-minute select board presentation, but the, the update is awesome. I have something you might be interested in. I'm happy to provide it. It's notes from the town meeting warrant articles in 2011. And where they talk about Nelson Burbank offering to give the indoor ice skating rink to the town and the town, and then leasing, was it four and a half acres of town property? So, so you may have already read the lease. So the town owns all of it now. Nelson was incredibly generous, gave us the funding and was a very successful and savvy businessman and never wanted it to be a burden on the town. So these town meeting minutes talk about how no less than annually there'll be contributions to the town while at the same time, you know, meeting all the needs of the sports and recreation and public skating that, you know, Burbank is charged with. And if your schedule's full, I guess you're doing that, which is awesome. So I did, the reason you might be interested in this because you do refer to that $300,000 investment you made a while ago. And it looks like the girls' locker room was a $15,000 component of it, but a lot of work was done back then, this is 2011. Sound system, scoreboard, granite countertops, deep rink dehumidification, Zamboni monitoring system, painting the interior, rink lighting replacement. That all came to $300,000. It says the improvements for the girls' locker room was $15,000 approximately. So I can, I can share that with you all. And this is, this is helpful. You know, I was on town meeting at that time. And, you know, there's a lot of talk about Mr. Burbank's intentions. And again, he was incredibly generous with the Town of Reading donating that project combination, supporting the construction of the new YMCA in addition to the ice skating rink going to town, when we barely had two nickels to rub together. So we're eternally grateful. But there's no, I want to be very careful. Rent, this is a rental situation, a lease to the board. And we appreciate the hard work you do. And it is a rent situation. And the Town of Reading counts on rent coming no less than annually as specified here in this town meeting update. So, so one of the questions, I sent you an email on May 7th, which I haven't gotten an answer yet. And if we don't have time tonight, that's fine. I think we need to have an operational meeting. I, I'm asking honestly about how can we forecast revenue going, annual revenue going forecast? 2023 fiscal year, fiscal annual year, very generous payment. I don't think there was much before that for a few years. And there was nothing this most current year. So our auditors are scratching their heads. They don't know what to do with that. And we, I'm sure you've heard that we're, we're being forced, our alarm has been raised on the finance committee about the potential need for an override. So, so that's a lot of pressure on members of the select board and, and the community if we really have to do it. So you'll hear the board every week, every two weeks talking about, what do we do to make sure the revenue is coming in? What do we do to make sure our expenses are under control? Things like that.
Can I just ask you a follow-up question? Did you say your auditors had questions?
Did I say auditors?
I thought you said I could...
I think I said finance committee.
No, I thought you said on...
Huh. I think that was, I was...
Regardless, whatever it is. I know I've reached out to town staff and have tried and are in the process of connecting Sharon Instrom. I always want to call it, I don't know, I apologize. Sharon Instrom with our accounting firm to go through to make sure. Because, you know, you can look at audit financials, whether it's accrual or cash basis, you know.
Oh, speaking of...
It's like anything in terms of, you know, accountants, one plus one equals three. You know, that's how they do their stuff. So that's why we're trying to get them to, you know, set up a meeting or a call or something like that.
That would be great. I understand your tax firm, your long-term tax firm, got acquired by another firm. I don't know if that's good or bad. But one of the concerns that members of the community have raised is that when it is, it is the same tax firm doing the auditing and saying, we're providing you the auditing books, that's like Sharon doing the auditing of the town's finances. There's no separation there. So it's not really an independent audit. Another alternative is that in the lease, the Town of Reading can, can do an audit. But, so that's been a concern. But I do wonder if your new accounting firm is big enough to create some separation so that it really is an independent audit?
I mean, as you know, whenever with the audit financials, they have to give a letter stating that it was independent. Otherwise, maybe they could, you know, they lose their CPA designation as well as, you know, lawsuits easily can be applied to them. So they're independent. But that's, I think that's a great question that Sharon should ask because they could talk about what, you know, whether or not, how they do it, how they do the auditing aspect of it, and whether or not she's happy with the standards that they do. She may sit there and say to your board, you know, I'm not comfortable with this or I am comfortable with this, and then we'll make adjustments.
And we have an audit committee as well. And so she could do it as, and you'd be okay with that?
Yeah, no, I mean...
Okay, you know, that's a great idea. I appreciate that suggestion. Because some of the things are a little wonky. And I would probably be curious to attend an audit meeting where that was discussed, because salaries are kind of high compared to local ranks. And I know you have long-term loyal staff and the rink keeps operating and we depend on that. But it is, it's coupled with an inability to provide the Town of Reading any rent payments on a regular basis, predictable.
That's, you know, a great question. But as you know, you're in the business world in terms of compounding. You know, that's how Warren Buffett made all this money, was compounding. When someone works for you for 32, 33 years in terms of, if Matt is with the town, I don't think he got 32, 33 years, but if you did, his salary just by compounding would be $500,000, $600,000, just because he's there and winning the raisins there. Right, but I mean, it's just how compounding...
The way we do it, no, that's a thing.
I mean, that's how compounding works.
The way we do it, as we, we did hire a consultant and we made offers to our town managers, a couple in the last years, commiserant with what other towns of equivalent size are paying our town managers. Stonem is paying their rink manager half of what, less than half of what we're paying our rink manager. And we have an assistant general manager as well. So a lot of salary.
So let me ask you this. From, from a business standpoint, would you rather pay someone a little bit more to be open 12 months a year versus 10 with Stonem? As well as, I believe the town has done, correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, have you got, is your pension liability completely funded?
No.
It's not, right? So the Stonem rink manager, secretary, assistant rink manager, all our town employees of Stonem, the Town of Stonem, based on actual real tables, have to earmark they're anticipating almost $3 million in pension liabilities because when those people retire for the next 25, 30 years, although they live that long, the Stonem has to keep paying them. So they actually have a pension liability of almost $3 million, where when Ed or Jim walks out the door, good luck, they're on their own. So we look at it from a long-term perspective, it's really Stonem fiscal policy.
Yeah, it's very unusual, I think, to hire employees for that long these days. Certainly, we do know that town municipal employees have pensions and some municipal players are, and our GM over at our MLD gets a matching contribution to his 401K, I think. So there's, so that would be great, though. I think this is why we need to have an operational meeting, really talk about it.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
We would love to understand. And, and again, it comes down to helping you make sure that rink stays open as it gets older and also being able to count on rent.
And the nice thing in reference with Ed, I mean, he's received numerous awards. I mean, the Boston Garden's always trying to steal him. Mendocino College tried stealing him. Little Town Complex, the developer of that was actually one, the one who did the development behind Burbank Arena, the sports complex. He's always been, trying to be stolen. His loyalty is to the Burbank family and we're lucky that we're able to keep him. One additional thing is if you look at, if you actually look at it from a pure business model in terms of hypothetically, say the compressor goes, breaks down, as you mentioned earlier, Karen. Ninety-nine percent of the time, Ed's the one able to fix things. So if we had to outsource that and have a person come in who knows, it may take a day or two to get there. And they're coming in and they cost us five thousand dollars, whatever the number is, five grand. Ed's able to do it basically with a salary in part. So we're actually saving money in the long term uh because he has that expertise to be able to do that. So just another bonus, I mean, if anyone's seen Ed around the rink, I mean, he's announcing the the hockey games that we're not paying an announcer, you know, forty bucks to announce announce the game and stuff. So he's always doing something. He's doing the concession stand selling to Peter McCook, who's material phenomenal, by the way, uh to drive additional money. So he he doesn't just sit there and he wears many, many hats, for example.
Nobody, nobody would ever say that Ed doesn't work hard over there. And he's a man who wears many hats.
Yep.
It's just getting back to um how do we get some revenue from Burbank, which was always the intention so that we can count on it.
And one additional thing, because I know you did bring it up, and I did have some success, Eastern Bank, um that uh I know you had reached out to them. They were the branch manager. I've reached out to them and finally um decided to figure out who our neighbors are. And we're very fortunate. One of the top people at Eastern Bank lives in the town of Reading. I reached out to her and within five hours, East had a person to fix the the scoreboard, um because they want to actually change their logo, um is um coming out to do that. And then Ed said, while you're here, um if you want to stay on the board, you need to pay us more money. Not pay us money, actually, because I got your amount from that.
Wait, what do you mean? What board?
Advertising. Yeah, the scoreboard, scoreboard.
Oh, I'm sure he asked him politely.
Of course he did.
Um and you're probably aware, the select board, one of the ways we've been talking about how do we help increase um cash flow, I don't want to call it revenue because we're not in it to make a profit, we just have to pay our bills. We are definitely talking townwide about sponsorships and being open to sponsorships. And I'll let other select board members, you know, kind of comment on that because we talked about that briefly and um.
Are you looking to advertise?
Um, I'm not talking about me.
Oh, I thought I thought you were asking, you wanted to. No, right. I thought I thought that took your ass. I apologize. Sorry. I'm sorry.
But we um talked about the differences between, well, we might colloquially call it advertising, but the mechanism that we seem to be in support of as a board was more of a sponsorship.
Yeah.
And that way, unfortunately, that way, if there's some, um I don't know, if there's somebody we feel like we can't allow we have some controls, whereas if you're an advertiser, apparently you gotta let everyone.
Which which I'm sure you're well aware of it, that there's, i- it's kind of a slippery slope you go down because there are certain companies that you may not want to have advertising in something that's primarily designed for children. Um I mean, I I think advertising on the fire truck, Chief Nelson, would be all in favor of that, right? Um but but, you know, if you, if it's something that makes sense, financial sense, we we certainly would be looking to do that.
Okay, well, I I would, this is a great start. I think it's important to have your other board members in the room with this board. And I would, so if if you wouldn't mind, um capital plan, Karen's asked about capital. I I would like to to see where Ed thinks like the expenses and the greatest risk are and what's going to cost us. And um we did talk about some increased disability and accessibility in the stands, and that's another thing that costs money. That would be helpful to know what your plans and thoughts are. And there's an AGO filing every year that um sort of discloses salary for the top employees. And um I I can't find anything um very recent. And that would be great. I'd I'd love to. I don't know the rest of the board members. I think that would be wonderful if you can connect Sharon and um I can follow up with her afterwards.
If if to to speed things up, um maybe you can generate your questions to Matt that we can send, whether it's financial, like the accounting firm or operations to Ed. Maybe that does speeds things up uh for everyone there. I know one of the things uh that dispatched to the recycling bins, garbage cans, you know, you you guys, you know, we gave you the parking lot, they'll do that. And the ones that are broken, you know, you touch more of the parking lot, they have those, which is great. Uh it's an exciting time for running between uh the retail center as well as um the pit mall courts. You know, we're very excited to work with uh the select board at town so that those projects don't get delayed. Because when they get delayed, it costs everyone a lot of money. As a taxpayer, it costs people more money. Uh so I know, I believe Karen, it was you, um you may have mentioned that about getting like a working group together because we do have to make an adjustment on the lease. Uh because I believe it was CPDC last night, um had whatever, wanting to know what the status was because it may hold up things. Uh so yes, you know, a couple of board members from here, a couple of board members from the ice arena to bang through these things. I mean, we have an attorney on staff. Uh we're not on staff on the board uh of the rink that may speed up the process so that you guys aren't delayed um in anything there because I know uh access to the parking lot is is a big thing that needs to be resolved um for both of those projects.
You are, you are correct. And um Jane was talking about that at the tour. So yes, I I raised my hand. I said the select board needs to be involved in that in some way. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Um I'll I'll let, I'll let my colleagues ask questions. I just had, I wanted to share some feedback. So a couple of years ago, you probably where the high school, schools' closing times changed, shifted back.
Coming back now.
Yeah, so so it's creating a challenge for anybody trying to get over the rink by three o'clock, which is like a traditional start time based on like high schools to get out at what, two-ten and
Two oh eight, yeah.
Yeah, right? So so what what that means for local Reading skaters is that they cannot get on the ice at three o'clock. And it pushes like, and I I assume a lot of the um North Shore Skating Club, of which I used to be a member, when it was in Lynn, is is from Reading and we would hope that. But there are community members from Lynnfield and other towns that haven't changed their schools. So what it means in practice, ice skating can be very dangerous when the ice is full. So what it has turned into is that Reading skaters, and not just the high school, at other levels, can't get on that three o'clock session. But Lynnfield can. It ends to be a um less crowded session, which is great for Lynnfield kids, not great for Reading kids. And then the sessions after that, if it's at four, if it's at five, it's after, mostly I'm talking about, I know you have some other sessions too, uh but it's after school. And I don't know what the process was, but you know, what the feedback I got was that even adjusting that start time by twenty minutes would allow a parent who's doing the bus driving to get, for a Reading kid over there and they run in and they put their skates on, they get on the ice and it's safer and.
Yeah, two things to that. One, Ed referenced uh three-thirty top start time for some of the high school teams and then the North Shore Skating Club because he's made some adjustments to the girls program. Uh and I don't know, the other thing is, I don't know if you saw it, the other night was actually, I believe, the commissioner of education. Uh actually, he's going to push for, I believe it's a twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, of making it mandatory, all schools go back to like an eight-twenty.
What meeting was this?
It was, it was on the news last night. The commissioner of education where, you know, what Reading and just around here, he talked about kids getting more sleep, better performance, all nine yards, that um two things. One, they took away the cell phones out of schools, which is great, uh that starts tomorrow. And then the second thing was they're trying to make it uh excuse me, uh mandatory all schools start at high school at like eight-twenty roughly. So that would push Lynnfield back in this particular case. So we'll have to make adjustments on that.
Thanks. Thanks, board members.
Did you have anything, Carla?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Carla was good. Um I guess for me, just a a couple of things. I I put this on the agenda for forty-five minutes because I think that it warranted a longer, obviously, discussion that kind of anticipated it. Uh what I did not anticipate is any future meetings with the Ice Arena this year. Um obviously, we have other things that we have to get to. Um but that's kind of why I put this on the agenda for this time for forty-five minutes.
I put it on as an update and what the lease says is we should have an operational meeting. So we're limited here and you've got to have public comment and the board isn't here and that's not an operational meeting. And I appreciate you getting this on the schedule. I know you have a lot of things you're trying to get through.
I I think I'll, I'll talk offline with Matt to see i- if there's a technicality or not, but I just basically put this off. I mean, they're sort of contest.
If you read the lease, it's very clear about this.
And and who would be violating the lease? That would be me. And if I decide to do that, then so be it. Um so um a couple of things. Um I know that during the discussion that we just have right now, uh the big takeaway for me from the entire thing is that it was all about money, 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 money. And I agree, all about money too. Uh except the town of Reading does not pay a single penny to the Burbank Ice Arena. Nothing. Zero. We're going to spend a million and a half on pickleball, twenty-something million on recalc, a hundred and forty million dollars on a Kellum school, and the Ice Arena is zero dollars. I'll take the zero dollars every day of the week and nobody will tell me different. That's just the way that it is. I'm a businessman and that's what I would do. So to hear that we're not getting enough money from them, um or that salaries might be too high, that's getting into the area where we'll get sixty-five different emails from residents concerned that we're trying to make um changes to staffing at a place that we don't have control over, which I I vaguely recall this being an issue. So for me personally, um I know that uh from uh following uh the Burbank Ice Arena on Facebook, it is non-stop updates from whoever's doing it, whether it's Ed or somebody else over there. Um and for me, it's always the little things that I pay attention to. There's all massive things that, things happen and all that. It's the small stuff that I pay attention to. And non-stop, every other day, there is some post on there. So as you're going through saying that Ed is fixing this and he doesn't have to do that, guess what? It's on Facebook. He's replacing parts on these large machinery things that are on there. He's up on a scissor lift changing stuff. You know what it's going to take to get me on a scissor lift? I started my company a decade ago, not to go on a scissor lift. So like, these are the things that I see that, I don't know Ed, you know, I I know he's been there for thirty-something years, everybody loves him. Um so I'm not saying this that I've had meetings with him or or anything. I just know a lot about him because of what I see put out there. He's a landscaper during the summer. Like, he's out there with some kid, maybe it's his nephew, who knows, out there doing yard work. Like, he's doing everything over there.
Chris, is this a sweet way of you saying that Ed doesn't have a life?
Well, uh that's why I'm surprised that he wasn't there last week because it seems as if he lives at the rink and I thought we were going to see a bed there. So maybe they didn't take us to the bedroom, but it it's.
He's scared of the Freddy Krueger and uh compressor that he has.
No, it just seemed like, it reminds me, I always try to equate things back to my own life. And Ed reminds me of my business partner and what I, he will do anything. We can do elevators illegally if we had to fix elevators in Massachusetts because of my business partner. He can do all this kind of stuff. He's the MacGyver of it. And I, I'm the yin and yang in this scenario kind of thing. Um so the long and short is that if I had a uh community spotlight, you know, Matt puts people on, I don't give any feedback. Um I I would have mentioned um at least Ed for this meeting because he does a lot more than people give him credit for. And I would hate to lose him to somewhere else because eventually that day is going to come. And we are going to lose because of him. So um and then lastly, you brought up projects. I know that um last night I I did watch CPDC as well because Kellum was on there. Um and the whole thing was about parking, 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 parking. They're not going to approve the plans because parking, parking, parking. And I'm just sitting there thinking like, if Burbank doesn't do this, what are we going to do? Because it's not up for us. It's up to Burbank to do this. And I think that a little bit of uh partnership and candor uh really goes a long way in these kind of scenarios that makes it where Burbank, of course, is going to do this. It's not expected or automatic, but that's the kind of relationship that we have. And I wouldn't want to see something jeopardize the way that things have been going over there. What did you ask to get for the barrels? For all that stuff being out there? Any modification to the lease? Any money from the town?
We do.
How much would it cost for us to rent out some spot in Reading, Massachusetts to do that?
Yeah.
Did you come up with a figure?
Not just that in terms of base side favors and soccer, they use our parking lot all the time for games because they're beating up parking in there for them to do that. But yeah, I mean, we we take pride because that's obviously Nelson's vision he always had. Uh one of the things that did come up and I I uh and I I do credit Ms. Herrick because she brought this up, uh I believe, a year ago of we really did kind of take a look at the reserve what uh amount, uh because it's tied to CPI, which everyone knows that's uh that's the number you can play with, shall we say there. Uh and the board actually talked about that we should maybe take a look at over time increase in that because everything goes up with the compressor. Uh as Karen mentioned, everyone wants to want to make sure we're never coming back to the town because Nelson was adamant about not having the rink be a, quote unquote, white elephant. Um so I think this is, this is the right time to to sit down and, you know, uh update, upgrade.
Add it to the list.
Uh so Chris, I I believe these women on the.
Oh, no, they they definitely have some. Yes. Now, like I said, I get this out for forty-five minutes. We got like twenty minutes. Just after the board.
Yeah. I think we're good now. We have a game plan going forward? Yes?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. So public comment, name and address.
Thanks. Um so my name is Jackie Gagnon. I'm the president of the North Shore Skating Club. Actually, my address is in Waynefield, Massachusetts.
That's.
Um so good evening, members of the select board. Um I'm, as I mentioned, I'm the president of the North Shore Skating Club here in Reading, which is an honor. And I'm here to just share one simple but important message to the select board. We are happy. We're happy with our relationship with the rink. We're happy with the support we've received from the town. And we're proud of the positive collaborative spirit that's defined our presence over the years. Recently, we heard that a member of the select board expressed some concerns that our club might be dissatisfied. And I want to be very clear. We're here tonight to set the record straight, not with frustration, but with gratitude. The rink has been more than just a facility for us. It has been home. It is where skaters of all ages, from beginners to national competitors, lace up, fall down, get back up and grow. It's where coaches, mentor, families cheer and lifelong friendships are formed. It's where coaches, mentor, families cheer and lifelong friendship perform. The staff at the rink have been responsive, professional and genuinely invested in our success. We could not ask for better partners. We especially appreciate the rink's support in hosting major events that mean so much to our club and to the broader skating community and to Reading. Each year, we produce the annual Ice Spectacular, a three-day show that brings together skaters, families and spectators in celebration of the sport. We also host the North Shore Open, a four-day competition that draws athletes across the region and showcases talent and dedication of our skaters. These events require coordination, flexibility and trust, and the rink has consistently stepped up to make them possible. Just like you were talking about in some of these examples, the staff coming into whatever it takes to make these events happen for us. They also supported us in securing the space we need to grow. Our clubroom, which serves as a primary, is an off-ice training space, was created in response to requests from our members and coaches. It's a vital part of our programming and we're grateful that the rink has worked with us to make that happen. I'm aware that there's been some comments suggesting we would like to use the clubroom as a changing area, which is not accurate. And I'd like to be clear that U S Figure Skating has strict guidelines regarding changing spaces and we take those very seriously. We're fortunate to have access to locker rooms when needed and we ensure our practices align with national safety protocols. In addition, the rink management and the board have been open and responsive to all of our requests, such as collaborating with us to evaluate our sound system. An improvement that's currently being evaluated and underway. This kind of partnership makes a real difference in the quality of our programming and the experience we're able to offer. We also want to thank the town for their continued support. We know that maintaining public facilities takes effort, resources and vision. And we've seen that vision in action. From scheduling conversations to infrastructure improvements, we felt heard and supported. Of course, like any long-term relationship, there are moments that require communication and adjustment. But we've always appreciated these moments with mutual respect and a shared goal to make this rink a thriving space for the community. And that's exactly what it's been. So tonight, we simply want to reaffirm our appreciation. We're proud to be part of this town's skating legacy and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Stephanie Solano, North Shore Skating Club treasurer and coach. Um I knew mentioning before about um I know mentioning before about twenty twenty-three was the first money given to the town in a while. I know as the North Shore Skating Club treasurer for the last six or seven years, COVID was hard on us. And we were not able to do a lot of sponsorship for our students. We had limited ice time because of COVID restrictions, so I'm sure the rink couldn't make as much money as well. As far as ice times, as a coach, I do have skaters from Reading on those sessions. The sessions can be busy at three o'clock. As a skater, kids need to learn how to navigate. So I don't think moving anything certain way, our sessions work out.
Yeah, we cap the number of.
We cap the number of skaters that we have for safety issues.
This is not the.
It's public comment.
Also, as a national coach, I traveled to many rinks. I just came back from DC and Atlanta this past weekend, DC the previous weekend. Comments that I've received from other coaches and parents that have visited our club at our Excel competition, which is a national competition as well, that see me at these other rinks. They tell me, you guys have such a beautiful rink. Other rinks that we go to, I was at the Panthers Practice Center for Sectionals, which is a major U S figure skating competition. The bathrooms were flooded, you had to walk through water in Florida to get to the bathroom. Ed makes sure our rinks are clean for these events. Our rinks are clean all the time. Every time you walk in the rink, it smells like clean fluid. It's always clean. We don't have to worry.
We were there last week, it looked good.
It's right. So we get comments and praise from all skaters at these competitions, how beautiful our rink is, how well it is, how much parking we have. We don't have that at other rinks in the country. We should be very lucky that we have this rink in Reading. And as far as rink management, it's hard to find a good rink manager. Rinks are going under, they're hard to find. And it costs a lot to build, so. I mean, any issues with the North Shore Skating Club should be addressed to us. We're very happy. We do have accessibility to disabilities at our North Shore Skating, at our Ice Spectacular. We set up a ramp, or actually Ed sets it up for us for wheelchairs. For anybody that has a disability, they have accessibility to watch the show. So that's our comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nancy. Name and address.
Nancy Dr. Boestert. I'm still here because I'm really waiting to see what these guys are here for. But this is kind of interesting, because I vaguely remember something coming up at last town meeting about Burbank. And so I find it really helpful for some clarification in the future about the board and about the relationship with the town, because I'm here in this discussion, and I heard you mention that you gave money to pickleball. But I'm vaguely remembering town meeting, the issue coming up about whose money, who gets to decide who gets that money? If that's the town money that you are donating, is that Burbank? So again, all I'm saying is, I would really appreciate some clarification as a resident. What does the board, this board do, what does this board do when it comes to revenue? Just going forward, I would like clarification at some point, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And typically, we don't respond to public comment again, but I specifically, because this dealt with me, I specifically made the suggestion that the Burbank money be used for the pickleball courts. And Jane explored the option, and that's what happened. It was made in a public meeting, sitting over there probably.
I think the question was, whose money was it? Was it Burbank's money?
It came from the Burbank fund.
No, it's the town of Reading's money, so I just want to make sure.
The Burbank fund is described.
If you're going to break our policy and respond to our public comment, we should have just at least addressed the comment that was made, that's all.
Carl, you can address the comment.
In the future, for the whole public, I would like clarification in the future.
It'll take two seconds. Believe it or not, it was discovered Sharon had been putting the money every year over, whatever, ten, fifteen years, whatever, into her separate account. She was ever a part of free cash calculation, she just put it there. And I believe Chris asked where the money was, and it turns like, oh, I have it in this account. And it was roughly four hundred and sixty thousand. We give the money, we have nothing to do with it after once it's there. So it was in this account, and then, you know, people find key money, different organizations.
It wasn't lost, the finance committee knew it was there, everybody knew.
No one.
If you're a town meeting member, you knew that we had an account that we created to just put that money in there.
But nobody ever used the money.
There's no rules.
Well, whatever.
And when you go on the board, you heard about it. So it's not found money, let's just be clear. It wasn't lost, it wasn't found, but you're.
No, it wasn't there, it was a separate thing that, I mean, I would think, I'm not going to get into it in terms of, there was an account that had forty thousand dollars in it from the, in lieu of lease payments to the town. The town had it, town meeting, which I believe you remember of, made the decision to go earmark it to the pickleball courts. So, and nothing to do with us, we gave the money and then over the years you had it, and then the town meeting decided to do it later.
Anybody else? Anyone online, Maddie?
Nobody online.
Okey-dokey. Final thoughts, anything? Once, twice? All right, thank you, Carl, we'll be in touch. We're ahead of schedule by three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
All right, eight twenty, discuss.
I was waiting to give you guys like some applause or something, this is for your civic class? Well, then I'm leaving. I was waiting for them, thank you.
You'll be here as long as I am.
Well, next time you come, I'll come back for you.
All right. Eight twenty, discuss potential override budget review, fire department permanent ambulance fees, a reoccurring discussion on money.
Good evening, nice to see everybody again. For those that don't know me, I'm Rick Nelson, my chief, place Craig Burns, still trying to figure out how to fit his shoes on. So Matt approached me a couple of weeks ago and asked me to take a look at the methods that the fire department takes money in. So with that, the two methods we can take, we take money in is through our permitting keys and through our ambulance collections for service and transport to the hospital. So I have two different, I can go over the two different memos if you'd like, and just kind of give you the high points on them and certainly ask questions. Do you have a preference on ambulance versus permits or okay?
They're both fascinating.
Yeah, okay, so I see ambulance on the screen, so ambulance is is. All right, so when Matt approached me, what I did is I reached out to other metro, so around the Boston Ring. We have a regional organization. I reached out and I got data from nine of the departments that also have transporting ambulances. So it'd have kind of a reference point to see what other departments are doing. I also went back to a study that Chief Burns had done at the beginning of twenty twenty-four to see what he had found. Then I used that to compare where we were. I also reached out to our billing company, so we have a billing company, we talked about it before, New England Medical Billing, that takes care of our ambulance billing. And I called them to find out what they, what they have, what's their trends with their billing across the departments. So the first recommendation is that we move over to what's called a bundled billing system. So currently, we have what we'll call an à la carte system. So there's a base fee for transportation, and then depending on the interventions you get, whether it's a cardiac monitoring or oxygen, you get additional money added onto it. The trend right now is to go to a bundled system. So what it would be, there would be three rates, a BLS rate, an ALS one, so kind of a medium treatment, and ALS two, the really sick patients. And what that does is it's one single bill going out to the insurance company, okay? And there's a couple of things that happen when we go there. First of all, insurance companies are looking for every reason to not pay bills. When you give them line items, it's more targets for them to refuse paying. So generally, what the billing company is seeing with a bundled system, you get a more consistent payment structure out there, okay? The other advantage of that is Massachusetts allows what's called balance billing. So for instance, if you're transported and it's two thousand dollars for the transport, insurance cuts a couple line items out and only pays a thousand, you, the patient, would then receive a thousand dollar bill to be paid from your pocket. If we move this bundled billing system, what they're telling me is generally, that's not happening, because it's a one bill, and the one bill's getting paid. So it saves that patient from getting kind of an extra bill, if that makes sense. So the first recommendation is to go to this balance bill. Now, how much money? So if we go to, let's go to page two, if we could on the screen. So there's a chart that I put together, and it shows the average billing across the nine departments, the highest paying, the highest billing, the lowest billing, where we fall. And then I have two recommendations. So my recommendation is if we do a Medicare rate plus two hundred and fifty percent.
Maddie, can we get page two on the screen, please? In the packet?
Yep, sorry, one second.
So while she's putting that up, so I'm recommending Medicare plus two hundred and fifty percent. And that puts us on the high side of the middle range of those nine departments in this area. Now, as a discussion point, the billing company said that in general, they're doing Medicare plus three hundred percent. So I did include that, that's the option B when we see it up there. The result of that would put us on the top tier billing of those nine departments. Now, this billing company deals with many, you know, larger area than just those nine departments. So we could certainly do the Medicare plus three hundred percent. They actually said some providers are asking for Medicare plus three hundred and fifty percent. The two hundred and fifty percent gets us in a more competitive or more closer to the average of what we're having in this area. So just a couple, a couple of last notes I'll go through, just so you kind of understand how it works. In twenty twenty-four, we transported sixteen hundred and twenty-four patients, and fifty-two percent of them were transported at the ALS level. Now, it's important to understand that this change would only affect private billing, so private insurance companies. Medicare has its own fixed rate, and those are in the packet that you can see there. Last year, fifty-seven percent of our transports were private insured patients. So I ran the numbers, if we, so last year, I'm sorry, FY twenty-five actual collections were about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, is what we collected as revenues. It's about forty-eight percent collection rate of what's billed out. If we took those same calls and we had the new bundled system, we would have collected about one point two million. So about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in money collected over, with that same collection rate.
And people would have paid less. Typically, is what you said.
So what's, yes, so with a bundled system, what they're saying is they generally have to do less of a balance billing. So generally, people are getting less follow-up bills, that secondary bill for the unpaid money, because it's just one line item. Insurance companies can just pay it. Does that make sense?
Yes, so it's not that we're sticking it to sick people in Reading. We are now potentially benefiting them financially, as well as us.
Yeah, when I started this conversation, I was kind of rightly happy to hear that, because I think it potentially will actually help our residents, as far as what they're going to see as a bottom. So my recommendation is, the last page is, you know, if you wanted to get into the data, I included all of the data, but we can skip that tonight. So my recommendation is we do Medicare plus two hundred and fifty percent. I think it's about a quarter of a million dollar extra money we've collected last year under that rate. You know, it's a guess, so could go either way. I guess I'll take any questions on that, if you want to stop there.
Carlo?
I know this is out of your control, but I just get, you know, I have friends in the medical field who rely on insurance or payments. And to see these numbers is just laughable for Medicare. And I know you can't do anything about it, but is there any legislation out there that you know of? Or federal, like, this is federal, but it's like, what? Five hundred dollars for the BLS one compared to even the lowest amount? It's hard to see in print, but it's, I know you can't do anything about it. I'm just asking if you're aware of anything to get those numbers higher, because, you know, inflation and costs and everything just keeps going up. But the insurance company, I have chiropractor friends, they get thirty bucks for a treatment. It's ridiculous, and that's off topic, but it's an example. Compared to this, it's not thirty bucks, but it's hard for me to understand, but anyway, numbers venting.
Yeah, no, I understand the frustration.
I love my chiropractor, I have to pay more than thirty-two.
You know, that's a fixed number set by them.
I know.
I'm not an expert on it, because I kind of came into the game late this year. But there was, there was a bill that was going to affect how we could collect Medicare, or was going to have a negative effect on us. And it was, the state got rid of it. So the good news is that we left, actually, that's good news, it didn't change.
Worse than this?
Yeah, yeah, I can't give you the details.
That's been surprising, though.
Yeah. So that's my suggestion as far as ambulance billing.
Approved. There's no.
Okay.
There's not really a vote on this, we can just do this under guidance of the select board. If you like what you see here and you're happy, we can make this change pretty quickly.
Cameron?
Thank you. Did your billing company say anything about the insurance companies blocking at the bundled system? Is saying, you know, it's easy to build one line as opposed to ten lines? Do they do any kind of reduced things on them after the fact?
Yeah, so when I had the discussion with our agent, she told me that, again, that it's generally a better collection rate on that. So, you know, it's possible that our forty-eight percent collection rate could actually go up a few percent, so that money coming could be even higher. I just went with the stat, just so we could kind of see what it looked like if we stayed the same. So we, you know, a year from now or two years from now, we'll have a much better idea where we stand. And we can, if we can see how it's going, and I can do a year look at it again, and we could always make another adjustment too, so.
Just be curious to see how it's working.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll find out. Karen, anything?
No, I'm always happy here for the fire department, like, grants, money raising, revenue raising, good job, thank you.
You'll keep trying as hard as possible, long as grants survive.
I've gotten those insurance, those ambulance bills, and you need to have good insurance, and if you don't, you're bombing. So, but so that, actually, there are these people that don't have the best insurance, because they may work for a small company, and they're not on those other programs where you're obligated to pay whatever the negotiated rate is. They fall in the middle. Are they going to be really, small businesses often have crappy insurance plans?
Yeah, that's a.
I guess that's the really only concern.
That's a really, that's a really good question that I didn't specifically ask the answer to. I know they don't collect a hundred percent, so that leads me to believe that there's a place where sometimes we don't get to collect from people. I don't have a really good technical answer for you though, so I apologize. But that's a great, I have to ask that question.
Yeah, ask about crappy insurance plans. Because I mean, you're a startup company, you're getting a crappy insurance plan. You're an independent business person, you're getting a crap, you got, you guys, y'all have it really good. When I worked for a corporation, I have it all really good. My husband's at the Gray Company, I have it good again. But we've seen the other side, and it's not pretty. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I value good insurance plans.
It's important.
Just lastly, for me, this is the definition of why I decided to have the reoccurring financial item on the agenda every meeting going forward, because to hear that we could potentially be getting two hundred thousand and saving residents money as well in the process is the entire, like, full suite of the best-case scenario that something could come up with. And I want to give Matt credit for this, because I didn't come up with this particular item on my own. Matt somehow came up with it, and this is a damn good idea. And if we could have more of these kind of discussions, every week getting two hundred grand, it would be fantastic. But it's good to see that you're up on top of this too, because how else would we have known about it as well? So, you know, you had mentioned Chief Burns had looked at it before, but it's good to see that things are moving in the right direction. So I think if you need guidance, you probably have the guidance, but, you know, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Message received. Yes, yeah, we'll work to make the change.
Anyone from the public? Anyone online, Maddie?
No aens online.
And briefly, just because I said I paid attention to the small things, I noticed that you listened to what I said in the meeting and put it up full screen originally, so thank you, Maddie, for that. All right, part two.
Say. Part two, sorry, one more. So part two is permit fee.
There's more than two hundred thousand here?
Don't spoil the prize. So the second part of this.
Hi, guys. Hi guys, come in, come again.
So the second, the second part of this is, uh, the other way that we, we bring money in is through permitting. So uh, by the fire code, there are certain things we need to permit. There are, uh, we have to do smoke detector inspection, the sale of the home, and there's a number of things. So the last time this was looked at was two thousand and ten, that's the last time we could do is an adjustment on this. There have been some changes in the code, the state has adopted a different code. There are changes in technology that required us to permit things that weren't on the schedule, and we'll talk briefly about those. Just, this, just for, for you, for your knowledge on this one, permit fees by Mass General Law do require a vote. And this blackboard would have to set that. So if, if at the end of this, we're happy with it, I'd be happy to come back with a finalized one, you know, to present for your consideration and vote. There is also a maximum fee for permits of fifty dollars. So we can't, anything that's not inspection, but any permits can't be higher than fifty dollars. With the exception of smoke detectors. And uh, you'll see there's a chart there for single family home can be up to fifty, two family up to a hundred. And then there's, there's a couple of the numbers, there's six or fewer and seven fewer that get up to a hundred fifty and five. But everything else is gonna be a hard, hard stock of fifty dollars as far as permits.
The state, I'm sorry to interrupt, the state put a limit of fifty dollars?
Yeah, Mass General Law, chapter one forty eight, yep.
I, I have seen it's, I have seen that Reading has remained very economical in terms of the smoke inspection fees. But I feel like I've seen a wider range for other communities, but I'll just pay attention if it's state law.
Okay.
Kind of curious.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I'm not gonna delve more, much more into that, but if you, I'd be happy to share that with you, you know, um, you know, an email helps out. Okay, so as far as permit fees, um, I, I asked around through some of the communities, I got feedback from, you know, the communities. Put all their data together and, and, and looked at to see where we fall. And we were considerably lower on a lot of, a lot of our fees. And there'll be a chart that we can review very briefly. So I'm not gonna recommend anything being increased above fifty dollars with the exception of one permit, two family dwellings. I'm gonna recommend that we go up to the maximum of one hundred. Just to touch real quick, so since two thousand and fifteen, when the new fire code was adopted, um, there are some new permits. Some of the things that would now be permitting as the code requires, there was a kind of a wild card fee of fifteen dollars. So every time we created a new permit, we could only go a maximum of fifteen dollars. So you'll see that reflected when we go over the chart. And so we're looking for two things, change in permit fees, so an increase on some of them, not all of them, some were just fine. And also adding some fees, some permit fees to the actual fee schedule, so some new fees. That's the two things that we're looking to do. To give you the punchline before we get into the chart, uh, twenty twenty four, we issued six hundred ninety eight permits. The revenue was um, almost sixteen thousand dollars. I ran the information under this new permit fee, we would have been just over thirty thousand dollars. Would almost double the, the, the permit fees that we, we would have collected last year, okay? So if we look at, if you look at the chart here, what I did is, um, on the right hand side is what I'm proposing in the twenty twenty five. Anything highlighted in yellow is a change. The twenty ten is just for your reference. You'll see anything yellow in that twenty ten, that's that, that wild card fee of fifteen dollars that we had to use. I also pointed out existing permit fees versus, versus new fees. And there's a couple of lies that we can, we can talk about a little here. The stuff in blue, um, I'm just, this, this is a little bit of a language change, change here. It was called special under the permit, I'd like to rename it as general fire to kind of as, as a catchall. And also, uh, it was called welding and cutting on the old permit fee structure. The current language in the code is hot work, so it'd be much more accurate to call it hot work. So that, that's what the blue is. The wild card, one of the wild card ones is the reinspection fee. So we currently do not have a reinspection fee in smoke. So we go out, we do an inspection, it fails once, twice, whatever it is, it's the same fee. There are some communities out there um, that do charge when you fail. Cause now we're going on again, a reinspection fee. So the fifty dollar fee is, is, is what other, some, some communities are charging, I shouldn't have blown that, but the fifth, that's a fifty dollar fee. So that's a little wild card fee of discussion tonight, ask about. And then the other kind of wild card I'll, I'll talk about is the certificate of occupancy inspection. We do for some of, um, some of the preschools have licensing, some of the churches that are preschools and have licensing. We go out and we do fire safety inspections required by the state. We have to sign off on a, and saying that they're compliant with the fire code and safety. And that gives, and they turn that in and they, and they get their license. Many departments are charging a fee for that, we don't charge anything. So again, I show you that, but I wanted to call that out, you know, for your discussion, um, so you'd understand what that is. The only other thing I'll call out is you'll see there are some that have changed the zero, especially in the plan review, specifically in the plan review. What's happened there is we were charging a perm, a fee for a plan review. Plan review, we do it, we basically work for the building department, we work for the building inspectors, building code, we're an arm of them. They're already paying a building permit fee, so we would double billing them for the same fee. And we learned a while ago that that was not good practice. So we ceased that probably eight years ago, if not a little, little bit longer. So those would be struck out, we just take, we just take that off the plate, cause we're, we're not doing it now. So without pouring too much more, I will open up to any and all discussions and questions.
Karen.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I, I learned recently that when residents and anybody is looking to put solar and batteries on their home, there is a. The Fire Department weighs in for a design process and has comments, are you guys doing that for free? Is that something that's starting to change in communities or how maybe doesn't happen often enough, I don't know.
So what happened was is.
Something else you guys do.
Yeah, so two codes ago, uh, there was a change in this other code, so it's not with battery storage systems. So battery storage systems, you know, people of the soul, they put in Tesla wall or some, some anchors, another one out there, they put in this product. And there are some real hazards that go with those. These go sideways, this was, it's been some studies where they're very, very dangerous. So there are codes now about that, putting in a garage.
It's hard to put the fire out, right? It's hard to put the fire out once it starts, that's right.
So it's hard to put the fire out and the way they react, they give off a very hazardous gas, it's explosive. So it's, it's, it's very quickly dangerous for anybody in the structure. So with that, there's some codes, you know, as codes try to catch up with technology. So now we review all that, because if it's gonna be in the house, there are certain things that the code now requires. Such as potentially putting all hard wired smokes in the house, having a proper fire ratings if they're putting in a garage. It can't go in certain areas, cause it just wouldn't be safe to be there. So there's now in the fire code, so we permit that new. So that was, um, if, that's on page, that's the bottom of the, the first half of the chart, like. Fourth lineup, energy storage systems. So we were charging the fifteen dollars, uh, that, that wild card rate. I'm recommending we go to fifty, cause that's, you know, it's a general practice around, around the area. You know, cause that involves time for fiber prevention as far as permit review, then on street time to do the inspection. So it takes some time to do this the right way. Solar, so there are solar now requirements as far as installation. Now, there's no actual permit, you can see that on here, because they haven't added that to our code yet, there's no permit. But because of regulations, we work hand in hand with the building apartments, review those to make sure they meet fire code items. So there's no, there's no permit fee, there's, there's nothing here that's gonna be eaten up by the, by the building apartment stuff, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Carlo. Of the six ninety eight that is on here, is it, I'm just trying to understand, is the majority of that? Smoke and com, smoke and carbon monoxide permits, or am I go off on that?
Nope, you are correct, I actually brought those, brought that data, cause you might ask. That's smart. Alright, so um, for smoke detector inspections, it was, uh, out of that, there was two hundred and ninety.
Those are for sales, correct, for transfer of ownership, correct?
So in, in the, in the twelve, twelve month period, there's two hundred and ninety of those. And then on top of that, um, there was like one for a low voltage system. But yeah, the majority, you know, a good chunk of those, and the next closest one, uh, well, that we don't actually charge for. Next closest one we charge for is it has to do with oil tanks. Every time there's an oil tank taken out or installed or both, there's this permit, this permit fee, that, that's the next busiest permit after that.
And the single family accountant condo, is that, is that condo part of like a single family?
Yeah, so the structure, the structure on that is, yeah, if you're selling a condo, you get charged for a single family home, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I heard this talk of the reinspection fee, maybe my chief burns, so he kind of teed it up a little bit, maybe last year. Or I heard it from a builder or something, but there's, so I, my, I guess, oh, sorry. My, my worries were concerned, it's two thousand and ten, it's fifteen years later. But for the residential portion, I, I. I hate turning down money, but I'd like to go a little, not as high as you recommended. Me personally, you know, I, I don't know what the board thinks, but uh, I'll let everyone else speak on that. And, and everything else is, to me is, you know, you know, more commercial. And not related to a homeowner per se. And, and I know we have to keep up with the times, of course. And I don't know how many food truck inspections we do in a year, but.
I think, I think we have like two last.
Say under five, probably, yeah. But um, yeah, that's all, that's all the comments I have right now, the reinspection fee. I don't know, fifty bucks, fifty bucks is the right number, or it's a gradual, you know, we come back once, it's this amount, we come back again. Then we whack them harder, cause something's wrong and they can't figure it out. But I, I have a little bit of a concern about the first three, fifteen going to fifty, twenty five going to fifty, fifty going to a hundred. Not a major concern, but it is a lot at once, and I know it's fifteen years worth, but that's my two cents for now.
Yeah, that, that brings into the line with, uh, that eight communities, seven out of the eight, just, just.
I totally get it.
Yeah, a quick funny story is, we get checks from realtors or Alberta people for fifty dollars or twenty five dollar permits. And then we have to spend time mailing them back to them, because they expect that fee.
No, no, I, I, I get it, I get it, it's just, you know, like anything, you don't do it incrementally, it's a, it's a bigger number. It's not a huge number, but it's just.
Yeah, that reinspection fee, if, you know, we could certainly delete it off of this round, if we could revisit it, we could drop it to another fee. I'll take, I'll take guidance, obviously, and.
Well, what, what is the main reason, I guess, for a reinspection? I mean, I know the failing part, but why are they failing? Is it, is it, well, you know, what's?
The why, you know, not to be wise, it's incorrect installation, so you know, so whether, I don't know if they're just not doing their homework to, to understand what it is, or. You know, what it, what it, you know, we, a lot of times, on the tricky, tricky ones, we'll get phone calls and we'll go out and kind of coach them.
And help, right, and help.
Yeah, before we even get this, we try to prevent.
Yeah.
The reinspections, cause they don't want it, we don't want it, could cause a delay of the sale of a home.
Right.
So we try every, every avenue. Unfortunately, some people just don't put any effort in potentially and they're not ready for this.
I get it.
You know, and then we have to go out and it takes some time and then we have to go back on again.
No, 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 I, I get it, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Karen.
I'd love to, Carl, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, I have to say that, um, you, I don't know if you found, did you find one other town that charges twenty five? Cause I, I don't see any anymore, so I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think we're blowing anyone's mind for a single family fifty dollar inspection fee. Cause twenty five dollars is just, yeah, I just don't see it anymore, it's great. I don't want, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'm one of the ones that putting smoke detectors, every single home is different. The state fire code says one thing, your department and your fire inspector has the, can have an opinion, which differs from the, what is written in the book and distributed to consumers. I'm always calling fire departments and I'm like, this is what I got, will you guys come on, look at it? Or, or I'm like, I'm too busy for this, I call an electrician and the electrician does the same thing that I would be doing. So it's kind of gone to the point where residents frequently calling electricians to deal with this. It is, it, because of that opinion factor and because it is more complicated now, because you get, when was the house built? What kind of detectors do you have? It's uh, it's not as easy as it used to be twenty three years ago, it used to be fairly straightforward.
I don't disagree.
So I do appreciate, I'm like sweet talking, like every fire department in the area, can you please help me? I don't want to screw this up. Or, or who on your fire department knows how to do smoke detector updates? Cause I have a client who needs one. And that way, guess what, it gets done, you hire, sorry, you hire the fire, the department, it gets done. The first time, no need for a reinspection fee, or they don't, or you don't get charged it, cause they're very sweet. Okay, that's been my personal experience.
I guess for me, uh, my lunch costs more than some of these numbers today. And just, I, I can't fathom you showing up to my house for fifteen dollars. Well, on what, why would I pay you fifteen dollars to show up to my house, ever? Know how much money you're making and you're showing up to my house for fifteen bucks, even at fifty? So I'm somewhat disagree with Carlo over here. You're, you sometimes show up to these, right?
Yeah, sometimes I have to, sometimes I have to fill it out.
Sometimes you do.
Absolutely.
And I, I'm, I'm losing money by having you show up to here. Not revealing things, but it, it doesn't take a genius to know fifty bucks ain't, ain't. Cut the bag on this. So for me, I'm, I'm happy with the numbers that, that you have on here. You know, i- i- if my smoke detector scenario is all good for fifty dollars, sign me up. Like, I, I'd rather know that things are working the way that they're supposed to than uh, the unfortunate happening. So um, I'm kind of good with all these numbers. I, I, I'm shocked that people were showing up for these things before. And one other joking question, how many cannon or mortar firing permits have you issued this calendar year?
There's none, I have, I have issued one.
Okay. You personally?
Yes.
As chief?
As fire prevention.
Oh.
Probably twenty, right, right after COVID, it's twenty twenty one, they had, they had a big event down at the range and they brought some cannons in. So yeah.
So they paid the fee though, they didn't just go away.
Absolutely, they called up, they had some paperwork, there's code that they had to follow and they, they were great, they were great session.
That's why like, when I see the open burning for fifteen and you're not going up on that, I think people would, if you went up on that, they'll just burn anyway. So at least we get something out of it, is my mindset when I see that.
Yeah, and, and that, and that for us is, is a relative, it's a light lift, it's some paperwork, it's obviously not online, there's, there's no, we don't have to go to inspection.
Correct, online fifteen dollar thing, it sounds reasonable, you showing up for fifteen dollars, it's just ludicrous to anything, ever. Like even showing up here, how much? Yeah.
Carlo.
You brought up the, um, maybe I missed it, on the, you were piggybacking on building permits. And you, that wasn't right. So is it an occupancy permit, a building permit?
No, the, the ones that we do are specific to the fire code there. So there are some state legislative, some legislative and some, some of the licensing agencies require the fire department to go out and do a fire safety inspection. So that, that's independent. That all of the plan review and all of the inspections we do under the building apartments, so the new building four thirty nine Main Street. We've probably had ten or twelve inspections out there, we're gonna probably spend four or five hours when they're ready to open. And all that's covered by the building fee, we're not charging any.
Alright, so it's something under your permit.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. I guess not too complicated-ish, I guess, um, I would say, I don't want to give a, a package deal discount to people doing more than one option at once. To kind of ease the burden of transitioning from fifteen to fifty. But if someone was getting a smoke detector and a oil burner or something, maybe you could do something where it's ten dollars off or something. Unless it complicates it in some backend thing. I think if, if you're going out for one trip and doing multiple items, it seems fair that, you know, they should, that someone should get. A, a discount off that, as opposed to having you come out four times for four separate things, if something can be done at the same time. So I don't know if you can hash something like that out, if it's too complicated, it is what it is.
So with the open gov system that we use for permitting for all of, all town apartments, the backend design is like a fixed fee. So you apply for oil tank, it just tells you, if you say two oil tanks, it just tells you, you know, two times that number. There's no algorithm to say if you do this and this.
Yeah.
You know, you can kind of discount, so it would be, it would, it would be difficult to, to have to do that.
That's what I was kind of, you know, it is what it is, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things, I think the increase is great and I cannot, I don't know why it takes us so long to raise fees in this town. Cause we were going over something a while ago and I'm like, two thousand and eight, like why? So I feel like. People that are building new houses and doing these fees, it's not like you're getting charged every year, you're getting charged once. So you know, every time you move, unless you move every two years in town, yes, it'll get expensive, but you're not getting charged that much. So I, I think I like the fees. My next one is kind of a personal one, um, I had. My next one is kind of a personal one, um, I had a, a, a above-ground storage tank replaced. And the people that replaced it said, oh, the fire department will call you, but I haven't heard from anybody, so, so can I get it at twenty-five before you're? Because I'm, should I just come on down and tell you what happened?
How many other Karen scenarios exist? We have to close this loophole.
Oh, right, I'm like, and he said, no, they should call you, I'm like, okay, and I guess I wait, I haven't waited that long, it hasn't been that long.
At fifty dollars, that's a, that's a, a violation, so you're good at twenty-five.
So is the normal course that the resident is supposed to go to you and have you come out?
No, so we get, when it, when it gets processed, when the installer is done, they let us know. And then, and then it gets assigned out to our lieutenants who, who work on the trucks. And sometimes they get busy, so.
Would you find you eventually?
They will, they will, they will hundred percent find you eventually, yes, yes.
Your installer remembered to actually call him, because then they have something on top, they need to see this, like, you know, I'm sure he did, because it was covered by my insurance and everything, so.
The installers are pretty savvy with it, so, yeah, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a matter of, again, they're working the nine-one trucks. So they may plan to go out on Monday, and then Monday doesn't allow them to go out.
They can come in a year and I'd be.
I don't think we can vote on this, Karen, you have a conflict of interest.
I'm voting on that one, unless, of course, I paid for it by then, then I'll be clean. Thank you very much, it's a lot of information, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, I hope helped.
Thank you for the school, as I'm not Karen.
You're welcome, you know.
I might give you the twenty-five, Karen.
I'm gonna do that, just because, no.
Are we, are we okay with the re- reinspection fee, fifty dollars every time?
He has to come back.
Well, I'm just asking, we, we discussed it, we discussed it.
Yeah, no, I, I'd be kind of like, that's painful, and it's, it's painful, so, but. If, if, uh, I want him to do it right this time.
Correct.
True, it's, it can be tough, I, I think, like, I think you should have the right to charge it, if you have particularly.
Discretion.
Discretion would be okay with me, you could tell when someone's honestly, like, having a bad day or bad issues versus somebody who's like. I, it's up to you, I, I would, I would do everything in my power not to pay reinspection fee, none of my clients in twenty-three years have ever paid one. Which I really hard, and I'm telling you, these things are complicated.
Well, I think if you tell them in advance you're gonna get charged one, that could be an incentive for them to make sure they do it.
Oh, sometimes it's tucked up ones, I had one in Tewksbury, they, it took three trips, because they just wouldn't talk to each other. The fire department is very gracious about it.
I, but once again, they, they still come back out again.
They did, they came out, they just didn't charge the homeowners, the lovely older couple, they just didn't charge them, they were.
Do you usually do things with discretion? Like, listen, I, I, I'm sure stuff like this happens, I'm not like, not a.
There's a fine line between discretion and equal treatment, but we do have discretion.
Don't ignore my advice, if I come back here, I told you what to do, if you ignore my advice, I'm hitting you.
As long as you're giving people heads up and letting them know, and, and you're having conversations with them.
Here's the other thing that could happen, I'm sorry to interrupt, you, we could have two different fine firemen come to the same home. And, and discretion and opinions, and then Chief Byrne helped me out a couple of times, and I was like, I'm having disagreement among the staff. Can you pick? Like, pick and tell me one way to go, so that, so that's where your discretion comes in, I think, right? I mean, you managing a staff, every house is different. Just what I want to be safe.
We try really hard to only enforce what's in the code, it is complicated, so sometimes what happens is. I, your statement was on point, that's, both detector regulations are very, very complicated, we have a flow chart to help, help us make sure we get it right. And, uh, what happens is sometimes it falls in the wrong pocket, gets interpreted wrong, um, so. We, but we try very hard to only enforce what's in the code, um, you know, but discretion is. It has to meet what, you know, code requirements are, so, you know, that reinspection fee, you know, we could add in, and when you apply, we could add a warning in. People would understand that they would automatically get notification that, you know, you know, ma- please make sure you're ready, and on that could be a reference to. Um, the guidelines, you know, to help them go to the guidelines and, and, and understand what they are. So we could, we could, we could prepare that, if, if you chose to do this, we could make that some sort of warning.
Yeah, I, I think that any kind of help that you would give to someone in advance to kind of, because we're not out here to screw everybody. But at the same time, people have to get paid for showing up, for doing a job, so. Anyone from the public? Anyone online, Matty? All good?
No hands online.
Alright, thank you, so, yeah, just come back, um, either next meeting or whenever, what works, coordinate with Matt.
Yeah, well, we put it on the agenda, we put it on the agenda, I can have a final copy ready, whenever you're ready to, for you to review and vote on.
Nice job, representation, easy read, thank you.
Glad, glad.
Thanks, chief, great job.
Alright, moving on, eight fifty, almost on time, update on charter review committee and discuss public hearing. So I saw Laura was here, she's gone, but.
Yeah, I can give an updating on that, so, we, um, if you remember, as you're the chair of the charter review, we were wondering if a public hearing was required. Uh, before the select board or the charter review committee, so Ivria, our town council conferred with the attorney general's office municipal law unit. And they determined no public hearing is required, what is needed is to place the item on a regularly scheduled, um, select board meeting. Um, and discuss the charter reviews, the charter review committee's findings, um, with the opportunity for the public, as you do on every agenda item. Uh, to, to comment, um, it needs to be done at some point before the warrant closes, the warrant has to close by the twenty-third of September. So for your meeting for the ninth, I would suggest that we put that on as an agenda item. Um, Ivria is working on the final language that we'll need for the warrant, um, so she should have that to us by the end of the week, which I'll forward on to everybody. Um, and we could take it from there, and then if you want to, if you want to let the charter review, uh, committee know that we're doing this, in case they want to, I'm sure they'd want to attend. Um, we can, we can do that, so that's, that seems to be the best course of action right now.
So how, um, I lost my question, I know the end, but I don't know the. Let me.
Okay.
Um, I guess the long and short of it is, is that I would still want to have more than one meeting. I, I think that, because this is so significant, you know, whether we call it a, a public meeting or not, I think that, you know, oh, now I know. When is the warrant close?
So I hope we're gonna get to that later in the meeting tonight, but the warrant is scheduled, I have to close the warrant by the twenty-third. We were supposed to meet on the twenty-third, but then we have Jewish holiday on the twenty-third, so we suggest we move that maybe even up. But at the meeting that we closed the warrant, it will be, it's part of the warrant, so it'll be discussed there, um, we can discuss it as a separate agenda item and as part of the warrant, whatever you want. But there'll be two meetings, I think that's correct.
Correct, yes, so I'd like to have it on the next two, then, the ninth, and then what we talk about super agendas, we'll have it on there as well.
Okay.
Specifically.
Great.
And then, um, we can advertise the email, so people can send messages to the charter@runningamay.gov.
Remember that, yeah.
Yeah, because we need more than one opportunity for that.
Sure, yeah, okay.
I assume everyone agrees.
Yeah, we're running, I mean.
I didn't know.
Well, we want it on for November, and, you know, so.
Ooh, I get that.
Yeah, but, and we're pretty, and we're done, I mean, you're done.
By having it on November, it allows us to have it on the ballot for April, which then saves us the money on a, on an election. That's why we did this, right?
Yeah.
Question, Carla, so when we, oh, sorry, we, well, I think you guys can hear me out there. When, um, no, that's, when, um. When we have this in our packet, is it, I know it'll be the whole charter, but the highlight reel will be the changes.
Correct, correct, Laura's been redlining it, it's on the website, I think I had her put the original, because that got removed. Um, so the original charter plus the redline changes.
So the public and us will be able to understand all the changes, all the word changes, all the significant changes.
About ninety percent I'll be able to explain from what I recall from back then, I mean, obviously, the rest of the charter, we'll send out something after this meeting. Um, to let them know about it, um, because we, I believe we discussed it at the final meeting on how we would want this. Do we want the select board running it, or the charter committee, and I said, you know, we have to bring it up to the select board, but I think it should be on, on the charter to run it, because it's. You know, we've handled it for a year and a half, or, or something like that, like, no offense, but no one's gonna really know. What's in there, like, all of the members on there that have done a lot of work with, so. That's kind of, so we'll see about maybe quasi-coordinating with them to see if they can make the meeting on the ninth, or the other one before the twenty-third. Whatever we come up with later.
Right.
Um, because I'm not gonna be able to answer all the questions, I, I think a majority, I'll, I'll know why we did something in some way, but, you know. Um, Jonathan Barnes did specific updates himself, it's better for him to explain it than me. So, and then Bill Brown suggested, he's not on there anymore, but he suggested a lot of things that nobody really wanted, so we didn't really do it. So.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions on the charter, since the ninth, and then we'll go over another meeting at the end of the meeting. Anyone from the public, online, Matty? Once twenty-three times, okey-dokey. So we will move on to nine oh five, when it's really nine oh one, uh, select board liaison reports. Karen, you could go first.
Part of the meeting, isn't it?
Yes, make sure you always go first, so we don't lose.
Very kind, would you like to start, should I, should we start?
You can go.
Um, I have office hours on August eleventh. Uh, I also, on August eleventh, had a town forest committee meeting, where it's very engaged. Um, talked about the new signs in the town forests, that they're advertising on the town website, actually. There was a good CPA update from the CPA group, talking about, um, information sessions, I guess they're going around and doing that. Which was very informative, a big discussion on that one. Reviewed the progress on invasive plant removal and ways to keep on track, um, I did learn, that I didn't realize that most of the invasives come in through the compost center. Didn't know that. I'm leaving at home, and I'm throwing it in the compost, and I'm contaminating the forest, gonna have to work on that. Um, they discussed educational programming, upcoming town events, um. Discussed plans to decommission the former water treatment structure, there was a big discussion about that, and then the fire road, there's some rocks on some of it. They talked about that at length, about the rocks, and making it more pedestrian friendly. Um, uh, we met, we, I met with the council of aging, very important meeting, um. It was a full, full slate of people at the meeting, they had a trust fund update. Uh, one member's working on an update to the manual that they use, um, they encourage members to watch the permanent building committee meetings. For updates on the progress in the design, et cetera, for recalc, there's gonna be an upcoming annual conference for council on aging that's coming up. And a few people attended in the past, they said it was great. Um, the big part of the meeting was the presentation of the operating plan for recalc, some town members came and explained the operating. The inside of the building, as opposed to the outside of the building, and the seniors were very interested in the programming part of it, which was not part of the discussion. But they're very excited to talk that, to talk about that discussion, um. We toured Burbank on the nineteenth, uh, twenty-first, went to the Green Communities celebration, which was great, it was wonderful. Um, went to the housing authority, um, visit on the twelfth, when the secretary Augustus came to tour the facility. And it was a really good meeting, um, we're very lucky to have Katie as the director, and she's, she's very intelligent and knows her stuff, and we're very lucky. And then I met with the housing authority last night, CPA came there and presented their stuff again, and, um, sort of finance issues. And resident suggestions and stuff like that, so, it was good. That was it.
Thanks, Karen, Karen.
Sure, um, let's see. So, um, I did attend the RMLD meeting, so they had an emergency meeting last Friday. They added a demnica- indemnification clause to the interim, new interim general manager's contract. Um, he is getting a 401K match up to seventeen K, he is the new interim general manager, who's not currently an RMLD employee. So this is somebody coming from away, Paul, um, you know, I think, um, they're meeting again tomorrow. And so I expect to attend that and, and hear more, and probably meet him, and, let's see, um. Okay, um, join the rest of the select board, the tour of Burbank, which we discussed earlier. Um, I was the only select board member in attendance at the school committee meeting. Um, I understand that modular classrooms have been successfully moved from Kilham and set up at Rise. Um, there was public comment from, comment from three town members, meeting members who are expressing concern about the issue. That has come up at the finance committee the last two meetings about, um. Um, out of scope spending on the fieldhouse floor and bleachers project, um. Yeah, it's, um, we got more of a list of the items that were, um, money was spent on. And, um, I do believe the finance committee is going to be thinking about some policies to tighten things up. As we forward these further construction projects, and then we'll be bringing it to the select board for, for input as well, so we'll be working on that together. Um, also at the school committee, sorry, back to the school committee, so the Mulberry Forest School, who's presented to us and been approved by the conservation commission. Did present and ask for an accreditation of the school committee, and, um, so the stuff the school committee works on is, is pretty technical. I'll give them credit for that, but they, and they are focused on public schools, so this is a private school, and not just a private school, but a private Montessori preschool. You know, coming to them, and so they have two educators on that committee. Um, and a couple of analytical types, and a business on, three analytical types, so, anyway, I could just feel their pain a little bit. It's hard to, it's not their normal wheelhouse, and it was hard for them to, on the spot, um, absorb and understand everything, so. They wanted to take, and also, um, the concerns they raised, um, would this school be requiring, um, transportation? For any students that the, that the school department would need to bear the cost of, like, under state law, there actually wasn't, um, a resolution, whether that even applies. But Mulberry was like, absolutely, we'll deal with that, no. Um, they were asked, do you have a place to go to lock down with the town yet, you have any sort of approvals in place, and they said, nope, we're working on it. And what was the other thing, um. Asked them a lot about their credentials, and I, that was the really tricky part, because. They're just, you, you need to be like a Montessori exit expert to like, ask these questions, and, um, you know, so. Anyway, at the end of the day, the chair proposed a preliminary approval, and it didn't pass, it was three to three. But I, and so they could come back, it's not like CPDC, one done, or anything like that, so they can come back, so I think that what they need to do then is just. Get some of those questions answered, and if there were school committee members that still had questions, the chair asked them to put it in writing, and just forwarded to them. And this, the accreditation, for your information, again, she has stated to us, I believe, and she continues to state that this pilot project. She's trying to get going, it is not dependent in any way on accreditation by the school department, she would just really, she thinks it's important. And it would be great, and, yeah, so she's gonna continue to work on that, but they're two separate things, um, not required. Okay, so that was the school committee meeting, and, um, RMLD. I attended the permanent building committee meeting for recalc and joined in on that, um, and I'm gonna meet with our board designee, Mark Docser. In September, in the middle of September, we'll talk about that going forward, the Green Communities event was fabulous, I'm getting emails from residents and texts, they're so excited. We're finally there, a lot of town meeting members, they know how long we've been talking about this, so, and, and the, the event was very well planned, and. The DOER commissioner is very gracious, and provided us with signs that we can post around town, saying that we are a green community, and, um. Uh, select board members, Karen and Karen, um, gave one to RMLD as well, that hopefully they might have at the meeting tomorrow, they probably want to do that. So Matt, thank you for thanking RMLD, because I completely forgot, and not one general manager, but two. And all of the boards for all five ERS, board commissioners, so I appreciate you doing that. And then the other great news that came out of Green Communities, um, related to recalc and Kilham, is that. Um, there's been changes in Washington, and, and some of these wonderful, uh, rebates for energy efficiency are going away. But apparently, the geothermal is not, or not really, and so, um. MAPC was kind enough, I think it was MAPC, no, it was. MAPC was kind enough, I think it was MAPC, no, it was. Yeah, it was Dylan, MAPC, Green Communities, anyway, they forwarded us information. So in, in terms of the commissioner, those geothermal tax credits that we had talked about in the project, that were never. Mentioned at the final presentation, the taxpayers approved the project as it was. Those are very likely still gonna apply, and they could be several million dollars. And as it applies to recalc, and I reached out to the chair of the permanent building committee, because they're not done with their design yet, so again, it's just. You know, we're making the right decision, what's cost effective in the long term, what's gonna cost the least upfront. So that's really good for homeowners, municipalities, this is a direct, a direct municipality type of rebate. We will need a tax provider, we will, there's some sort of like, you send the plan to them, you get a preliminary approval. And then you fill in a couple of tax forms and you get it, just like a resident, more like a consumer would, so. Anyway, so I don't know who would staff. Needs to understand that, I have no chance to look at it yet, but Pat Tompkins has it as well for the bill. So thank you, and I think, I think that was it, thank you.
Thanks Karen. Carlo, alrighty, so CPA met. We reorganized, Joe remained the chair, Joe Carnahan and Sarah Bucolaccio remained the vice chair. There was a lot of discussion, as Karen mentioned, about presentations to other boards and committees in town. That is ongoing, the flyer was finalized, and there will be a booth at the Fall Street Fair. To spread awareness and, you know, that it's coming to, will be coming to a vote. And then last night was a packed agenda for the CPDC. With Killam and the recalc among a few other items, but. The main takeaway is that, you know, as a town, even though it's our building project, we still play by the rules. And going for permits and waivers, so what came out last night was a stormwater permit was approved for Killam. And a few other things are gonna be ongoing, and for recalc center, the main. Takeaways were the, as we heard tonight, the shared parking agreement with Burbank. And just ADA accessibility, what's gonna happen to Range Road, how that's gonna look. And just that there's enough parking, CPDC shared some concern, some members. Shared some concern about parking over there with so much going on at once sometimes, not all the time, obviously. Pickleball will not be played outdoors in the winter. But hockey in North Shore. Use the parking a lot, and so they just had some concerns about that, nothing serious, and they're coming back again for, for that, and I don't know when. The parking agreement draft will be ready, so they're, they're gonna be waiting on that CPDC. Yeah, so, and then I attended the Green Communities and toured the Burbank with the rest of the, the folks up here, and it was, it was very nice. Learned a lot at both of us.
Thanks Carlo, yeah, I, I toured the Burbank, I certainly know what everyone here as well. I noted that it was indeed cold in there, so. It's a nice drink. And also the Green Communities event, that was definitely. Well put on up there, and the rain sort of kind of held off, which was good, we didn't have to do it indoors. I just kept noticing that FedEx trucks always driving right by, like, while everyone's speaking, so it's kind of weird, but, you know, is what it is. And then lastly, the, I attended, I know Carlo was there and Matt and Jane. Memorial for Michael Coltman. Yeah, so it's. It was good, like, Jane, you did a wonderful job speaking. And really put a, you know, punctuation mark on Mike's life here in Reading and his contribution to the town. And there was hundreds of people there. A majority pickleball, like, it is what it is, like, he made a. A massive, long-lasting impact on, as you can tell, one of the. The resident, the guy that spoke after you before you, the one with his daughter, he was here for like a year or something in Mike's monument memorial park. Like, significant enough where even they were speaking at his memorial. So, you know, it's very unfortunate for the Coltman family. But the, the event, if, if they have any solace, the amount of people that they saw come up to this. Should, you know, hopefully try to carry them through this time, so. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I, I apologize. Yes, the celebration of life was. Very uplifting, it was all about Michael Coltman's life, from the early years, from his childhood friends to his college friends. Learned how Judy and Mike met, and just his life. You know, working for the Department of Transportation. Then his second life of Ultimate Frisbee and pickleball, and that's how I met him. And a lot of us that met Mike that way, Mike and Judy. It was just, it was very nice, and. I can't say enough about the Coltmans and what they've done for this town, but, and I probably wouldn't have met them the way I did meet them and got to know them. And watched them form RPPA, and just advocating and volunteering and. It was just a really nice night, and for about a half hour, it started to rain, not rain, started to rain, not rain. And we all were panicking, but it didn't, and it turned out to be a great evening, and Judy. Was a trooper and, and just talked to everybody that wanted to talk to her, that lasted, we'll be on the ceremony. And then a few of us went to commiserate at Bonraddy's after, and it was just a lovely event, and I can't thank. Michael for what he's done, for me personally, and for the town of Reading. And Judy, I know will not stop advocating and doing what she's been doing for the town. And I've only known him for three years, so it was great, and thanks, thanks for reminding me, it was a very nice evening, thank you.
Alright, anyone else?
I just have one quick thing, four minutes.
If you could just come up to the.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
Name and address, thank you.
Ben Reen, I live at nine seventy-two Main Street, right by Birch Meadow. I just wanted to thank Karen Herrick, and she's our liaison, and she's been very supportive. I've been part of the committee for twelve years, we work pretty hard, but with a lot of fun. And I hope that we have helped contribute some value to the town. And one of the things that we always try and do is look at the different communities, different neighborhoods. And see if there are sort of natural ways that we can sort of connect to the town. I mean, there are wonderful natural resources, resources, and I know we have a forest department as well. I did want to make it clear that there is a forest department and a trails department. I mean, they are different, you know, different people, different budgets. We're all in, in, mixed together in terms of, you know, ecology and. And taking care, good care, being good stewards of, of the natural resources of Reading. So, thank you Karen, and. And I hope that you guys see some of our work, thanks.
Which committee were you on again?
Oh, Ben. Oh, I'm sorry, Ben Reen and Trails.
Trails, okay.
And I've been there twelve years.
Alright, we will move on to nine fifteen, future agendas at nine nineteen. Does anyone have anything for future agendas?
I have one. And I regret not asking this when it happened two years ago, so October is Italian Heritage Month. And the State House acknowledges distinguished Italians every year. And two years ago, my uncle was honored, one of three people that night. And one was a Nobel Prize winner, just to give you what category my uncle was in. And I regret not asking for this last year, but I'd like a proclamation to have October Italian Heritage Month, in October, or later September, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, do you have anything? Yes, so it was, it's been, we've mentioned it, but the select board has not talked about it. We should have an agenda item to talk about renegotiation, renegotiating the Burbank lease. And I would like to hear what staff is thinking, might be needed to make parking manageable over there. And. And that kind of feeds into, you know, what Carl suggested, and, and an operational meeting and, and a smaller. Potentially subcommittee from the select board to, to participate in that, but. So the lease, if we, we, we sign the lease, it is our board and their board, so we definitely need to. Make a motion if we want to do this, and. Yeah, CPDC's never one to shirk from saying, you're doing this in the wrong order, and frequently I forget, forget them. So I appreciate them doing that, but we need to talk about that. Yeah, so let's just do that, and then we're gonna, either we do this with the finance committee or we do it on our own. We're gonna need an agenda item to just talk about. Policies and protocol related to spending monies approved by town meeting. Because I've been getting calls from residents. And we, having been a town meeting member for twenty-two, twenty-three years, we approve a lot of spending. And we are told that not to worry, we will only spend on this project. And we will not borrow more than we need, and we will take good care of your money, and. There are a number of people that are very concerned about how the fieldhouse floor and bleachers project went, so anyway, just, I will belabor it. Can you please have a discussion, discussion about, a topic about that, and we can try to coordinate with the FinCom, I will, if you want. I can, I'm their liaison, so they'll be having a meeting and updating their members, I'm sure.
Yeah, Matt, you can coordinate.
Yeah, and I know FinCom's working on some policies as well, so.
Anything else? Carlo, you have something else?
Well, I just want to make it clear, we're not renegotiating the terms of their lease. Karen, we're not renegotiating the terms of their lease, we're doing an amendment to the lease.
We haven't even talked about it, we're not doing smack. We have to have that discussion too, and so we can't have it right now, it's not on the agenda, we have to have an agenda, just talk about what we're gonna do.
I think we have to have something regardless, because CPDC needs something.
That's what I'm saying, Carl, we haven't had any discussions.
Is required for CPDC to be happy with. The projects going on there is what we're gonna have to do, whatever it is. So you guys coordinate on the lease amendment, whatever, neither nor, however you.
Members can comment on whether there are other things we should talk about at this time, and even Carl brought it up tonight, so it can be a little broader than that. We weren't given that opportunity when we signed it a couple of years, we were told. And, and the lease is written, take it or leave it, and they weren't interested, but. It's in the best interest of, for any number of reasons, we talked about tight eating plant, what have you. Need for revenue, to, to talk about it.
I think we'll, we'll see where.
We just need the agenda item to talk about. Just an agenda item, yeah. Discuss, not discuss and vote, just discuss, just want to be really clear.
We might have to vote depending on the timetable for.
This is mine or yours, did you bring up this is a future agenda item, I don't want.
Neither one of you would have had to, because no matter what, it has to happen regardless.
Correct. What we need is bring it up, okay.
I brought up in the liaison report to CPDC.
You did, you did, I appreciate that.
Right, but it was not.
Came up during our tour, it needs to be an agenda item, that's all.
But it was never discussed about lease renegotiations, they, they, when they renewed their lease, when they renewed their lease, it was their option to renew. That's it, end of story.
That's not, that's not a bilateral contrast, right, we need to just have an agenda item to talk about it.
The waters of debating items, well, Matt and Jane, they know what to do, and we'll get whatever we need. To be able to have projects happen.
Are you guys gonna do that on your own?
Yeah, we, we, we're, we're working on a lease right now, you know, knowing that this was coming, and I think it was mentioned at town meeting, you would need this for parking. But we were intending to, to obviously bring it to the select board for input and for ratification. Working on that amendment, so, yeah, so it's in the works, that was one of, that's one of the reasons we were at Burbank a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, so it's important that. It's important to me that it's not just Burbank telling you what they want, and, and it not coming from you guys to us, that's all, I'm looking for more information.
Right, yeah, fine.
I guess my one thing to add, even though I add whatever, is, and I know you brought it up earlier, Matt, about. Post being the sponsor for.
Yes.
The Fall Street Fair. It was brought to my attention that we do not have a valet permitting kind of system in town. So for the next budgeting item, or maybe the follow-up to that. Is to see what we can do about valet stuff, so you're gonna have to coordinate with.
Yeah, I mean, this, this did come up.
P D Chief, Emmerdale.
Open, the police department's involved, but we can look at it again, yeah.
So you can see what, what you can do with that.
Yeah, sure.
Are we talking about adding stuff to the budget, adding expenses to the budget?
No, this is us making money. Though, well, that's the general idea, it's. It does. After-hours parking, though, that's the catch. Half-hours parking is the catch. Anytime you can sell after-hours parking spots, sign me in.
Um, one more thing, we haven't had a preview on the tax rates, and that's coming up.
I brought that up to, to Matt already.
Victor about that, so, so I'll have an update on that soon.
Anyone else from the public? Future agendas, Maddie's not online, Maddie.
Nobody online.
We want to talk about moving that, that meeting, though.
Good point, so during the agenda setting, Matt brought up that. Our twenty-third meeting falls on the. Either first night of Rosh Hashanah.
Right, right in the middle.
Right in the, while it's happening, it is happening. So we're gonna have to see about moving the meeting, and we cannot move it after, because the warrant has to be signed. So we need a meeting after the ninth and before the twenty-third.
And it, and it seems to be the twenty-second, it starts at sundown on the twenty-second, so I don't know if you want to avoid that. The Monday would be easy, but I'm not sure that that.
Not the Tuesday before.
The sixteenth, yeah, we could do it then, whatever you want.
See if the room's available.
Okay, I mean, we could certainly make it available.
Yeah, that's where we're at.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
That's fine for you.
Alright, so, see about doing the ninth and the sixteenth.
The ninth and the sixteenth, okay, I know the bylaw committee was gonna have a, some sort of public hearing on their snow shoveling, but maybe we can talk about. Doing that another night, so.
I mean, the fifteenth, I don't know when the next permanent building committee meeting is, or CPDC's on the fifteenth, I don't know if the fifteenth is an option for Monday. Permanent Building Committee.
It's not, we're meeting on the, the, was in the permanent building committee meeting on, it's next Wednesday, the.
It's the third.
Yeah.
I'd rather have it on Tuesday myself.
Okay, okay, so we'll get the sixteenth then, I think it makes sense, and so it'll be sort of back to back, but, okay. Yeah, and that clears the holidays.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to discuss and vote and to approve meeting minutes on August fifth. I did not have any change.
I had one little word change in my liaison report. Where's the liaison report?
You all said, Carlo?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. The part where we said. Let's see. Okay, the second paragraph, a select board liaison reports. Last sentence on the page, she attended the RMLD audit meeting and discovered more information about kilowatt hour numbers. More like I updated the select board about kilowatt hour sales. Trending kilo, yeah, ah, yeah, we can just summarize it. That could just be an updated the select board about kilowatt hour sales. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I have a motion, Karen?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of August fifth, twenty twenty-five as presented as amended.
Second.
Second by Karen, any discussion? Sing no, although it's.
Sing none, all those in favor, four zero. Anything else, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Karen, all those in favor, you are adjourned.